Pursuant to Section 84-1411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular board meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held Monday, May 4, 2015 at 6:30 PM in the Board Meeting Room of the Future Administrative Center, 3215 Coming Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 84-1412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the Board Meeting Room on the North Wall. And at this time, we are so privileged to have the Omaha Public Schools Mini Singers with us, and they're actually going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. So if you would all please stand, and we will let them lead us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. And in a few moments, we will also be very privileged to hear them sing a number of songs for us. So with that, we will go on to the OPS Vision and Mission Statement.
Good evening. Our mission, every student, every day, prepared for success. And our mission, Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college, career, and life.
Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Fay.
Here.
Gotti.
Here.
America.
Here.
Scanlon.
Present.
Snow. Underwood. Vargas.
Present.
Wayne.
Present.
Williams.
Present.
Seven present.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to call on Mr. Andrews, who will introduce our school spotlights this evening.
Madam President, thank you. And we are privileged tonight to have several school spotlights, not least of which is the very first one before you, which you mentioned moments ago. Ladies and gentlemen, would you please welcome, with a number of musical selections, including the National Anthem, the OPS Mini Singers.
(Applause)
(Singing) Oh, say can you see by the long, dirty light? What's a valley we share and the twilight's thus gleaming? Whose bright and bright stars through the everless sky? For the rapture we want, for the balance we stream. And the roses will bloom, love of first we give. In blue to the night, that our flag was still there. Oh, say the sad stars, they go and they pray. For the land of the free and the home of the free.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. The OPS Mini Singers had a remarkable 2014-15 school year, which you can see from our April Concert Program that I asked to have at your seats. Our singers come from all over the district to rehearse with our two directors, Philip Shorg, who teaches at Davis Middle, and Jane Fredrickson, who teaches at Prairie Win. Our accompanist is Janelle Solenberger, who actually has been out, she had some surgery. She teaches at Masters, so we have Lori Rothman accompanying us tonight from King Science and Technology Magnum. It is with great pleasure that the Mini Singers come this evening to share a small portion of our spring concert with you, the school board. It is our gift of thanks to you for supporting enrichment programs such as the Mini Singers throughout our district. They will be singing Cantate Domeno, Answer to a Child's Question, and Boogie Woogie, Your Friend of Mine, the Mini Singers and their directors. Thank you.
(Singing) Cantate Domeno, cantico di luce. Cantate Domeno, a mistero. Cantate Domeno, cantate Domeno. Alleluia, alleluia. Cantate Domeno, cantico di luce. Cantate Domeno, a mistero. Cantate Domeno, cantate Domeno. Alleluia, alleluia. (Singing) Cantate Domeno, benevolente non né. A cunzina te, intelligente, morirà solo. Ora, padius, oviu. Ora, padius, oviu. And thou, thou be, and thou, thou be, is free. And thou, thou be, and thou, thou be, is free. And thou, thou be, is free. Cantate Domeno, cantico di luce. Cantate Domeno, a mistero. Cantate Domeno, cantate Domeno. Alleluia, alleluia. Alleluia, alleluia. (Singing) You ask why the birds sing the sparrow the dove? The wind is and brush, say, I love and thy love. In the winter, the silent, the wind is so strong. But it says, I don't know, but it sings a love song. For the green fields and the sun, and starry or red. And singing and loving, all come back together. For the Lord is so grateful, of gladness and love. The green fields below her, the blue sky above. And she sings, and she sings, and forever sings she. My love, my love, and thy love of the sea. You ask why the birds sing the sparrow the dove? The wind is and brush, say, the sky above. In the winter, the silent, the wind is so strong. But it says, I don't know, but it sings a love song. For the green fields and the sun, and starry or red. And singing and loving, all come back together. For the Lord is so grateful, of gladness and love. The green fields below her, the blue sky above. And she sings, and she sings, and forever sings she. My love, my love, and thy love of the sea. For the Lord is so grateful, of gladness and love. The green fields below her, the blue sky above. And she sings, and she sings, and forever sings she. My love, my love, and thy love of the sea. (Singing) Boogie, woogie, do so fine. Boogie, woogie, all the time. Boogie, woogie, you're a friend of mine. Boogie, woogie, do your thing. Boogie, woogie, let it swing. Boogie, woogie, you're a friend of mine. Boogie, woogie, dancing down the street. Boogie, woogie, makes you move your feet. Boogie, woogie, jumping to the beat, singing. And boogie, woogie, rhythm. Boogie, woogie, do so fine. Boogie, woogie, all the time. Boogie, woogie, you're a friend of mine. Ooh, ba, la. Ooh, ba, la. Boogie, woogie, you're a friend of mine. Ooh, ba, la. Ooh, ba, la. Boogie, woogie, you're a friend of mine. Boogie, woogie, dancing down the street. Boogie, woogie, makes you move your feet. Boogie, woogie, jumping to the beat, singing. And boogie, woogie, rhythm. Boogie, woogie, do your thing. Boogie, woogie, let it swing. Boogie, woogie, you're a friend of mine. Boogie, woogie, you're a friend of mine, all the time.
That was wonderful. And thank you to all the parents for all of the time that you took, I know, to take them to lots of rehearsals and practices. So we appreciate everyone's contribution to the wonderful talents that our students have. So thank you so much. Mr. Andrews.
Madam President, thank you. Maybe one more round of applause for our wonderful Mini Singers. Thank you so much. We continue with our school spotlights now. We have a lot of accomplished poets here in the OPS District. And we congratulate tonight those OPS students who've been competing recently at the Louder Than a Bomb Spring 2015 Poetry Events, as well as Poetry Out Loud. We are fortunate enough to have some participants tonight from Central and from South with us, and we now invite them from both schools up to the podium to tell us a little bit more about what they do. Please come on up, and please join me in welcoming them to the podium.
I'm Carol McClellan, and I am the Creative Writing Teacher at Omaha South High School. And I have been sponsoring Louder Than a Bomb Poetry Slam events at South High for the past four years since we started. In fact, we actually piloted the program at South High back in 2011. And it's been a wonderful program that allows students to present their original poetry, not only in workshops every week, but also during a competition that just is, actually the finals are tonight, we're on our way to the finals of Louder Than a Bomb down at the Holland Arts Center tonight. So I have one of my students who is here with us from Louder Than a Bomb. And we also participate in Poetry Out Loud, which is a poetry recitation competition where students recite poetry that is classic poetry, anything that is not there is that they choose. So they're both wonderful programs that we're so thankful to be a part of and want to give our thanks to you for supporting us.
Hi, I'm Ginger Riffle from Central High, and I'm here to introduce my student who participated in Poetry Out Loud. Poetry Out Loud is a national program, and my student Claire Lavender has represented Omaha Public Schools for the last two years at the state competition, and she's done extraordinarily well. So.
And I'm here with my student Kirsten Walter. Would you like to hear a poem? Okay.
Oh, gosh. (Laughter).
Kirsten Walter is going to be presenting her original piece called, are you ready for this, Hot Chocolate.
Do I speak into that? Yeah, go ahead and speak into that. Oh, my gosh. Okay. Okay. This is my poem, Hot Chocolate. Dear Crush, first of all, can I ask, why is a crush really labeled a crush? Is it because they like to crumble up every viable piece of our well-being? Well, when I look into your eyes, I feel as if you're different, so let me restart this letter off by saying, dear Hot Chocolate, yes, I said hot chocolate with your creamy swirl of moka surface and your blissful scent. You smell like an explosion, an aroma of potential on purpose, but yeah, you tell me, I smell like laundry detergent. And I can't help but laugh, I don't know if that's good or bad, but whatever it is, I like you just the way you are. I don't need any creamers, no sugars, no add-ons. Instead, baby, let's focus on what's missing. You're missing me. I want to be the marshmallow that drowns in your presence. I want to melt into you until nothing's left but a blend of our perfection. I want to be part of you because you're God's greatest creation, and He invented you knowing I would eventually need hot chocolate. See, baby, I'm ready to prove it. I promise I won't ever leave you out, and I won't ever let you doubt that your in-steady hands will take little sips at a time so that it's guaranteed we last. Yes, baby, I want us to last. I'll keep you warm and cozy once below freezing because every encounter with you gives me this warm, tingly feeling, and it begins at my lips, and it lingers until it's buried into the pit of my stomach. And you are the only one who can cause this. Maybe that's why I can't get over how much I love it, but let's be honest, you're more than just hot chocolate, you're my motivation and my inspiration to be a better person. You are everything in life I've ever wanted. Usually, I have you in the palm of my hands, but tables have turned, and you have me in the palm of yours, baby. With you, I have so much yet to learn, and if you'd just give me some more hot chocolate, I promise I'll return the favor. I'll show you what unconditional love is. Sincerely, the marshmallow, the whipped cream, and the cherry on top. P.S., I'm going to savor all of you till the very last drop.
That was great. Thank you so much.
Very much. Good night.
I don't think you're going to go that fast.
My name's Claire, and I definitely forgot the poems that I did for Poetry Out Loud because I'm kind of busy. I'm in soccer, I just had a game. So, no, I left at halftime, so I don't know. But we hope so.
I have a question. So Claire, what poems did you do this year? I think you have to do three at state, right?
Yeah, I did The People, yes, by Carl Sandburg. I can't remember them. Once I, like, once I didn't make it on to state, I had so many things going on that I just, yeah, I'm kind of busy, but yeah. It was a really fun experience, and I'm really glad I've done it both my years at Central, so.
Thank you. That's great. So thanks to all the students who participated, and for your coaches that helped you with it, and the principals, and your teachers, and your parents that supported you. So that's awesome. Thank you for being here. I'm missing your soccer game. And now I'm very, very thirsty for hot chocolate, so I thought you might bring us all some, but very good. Well, thank you so much for being here. And I believe that we're going to have another school spotlight, but it will be a little bit later. So thank you very much. At this time, we're going to stop, and I will take a motion to excuse Mrs. Underwood.
So moved.
So there's a motion by Mr. Wayne, and is there a second?
Second.
So a motion by Mr. Wayne, and a second by Ms. America to excuse Mrs. Underwood. Roll call, please.
Fay.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Eight aye.
Motion carries. With that, we will go to the Treasures Report, which I think is attached onto the agenda. And we will move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd like to draw attention to the T-shirt in front of the school board members celebrating the Week of the Young Child. So each of our board members has one of these, and I believe we probably have some early childhood teachers in our audience. If you could raise your hand, if you've got some early childhood staff. Well, maybe not. No, I guess not. We were going to recognize the early childhood staff, we'll recognize them later. Just as a reminder, we are adding on two EduCare sites, as well as four early childhood sites that are funded by the learning community, and so we're excited for that expansion. That's going to make a big difference for our young people. So I wanted to start off with that, and then I also wanted to do a little bit of a shout out to our teachers, to our principals. Right now, we're in the middle of what's called the NESA testing season, and it's very stressful. Our teachers feel the stress, our young people feel the stress, and our principals feel the stress. And I've been to the buildings, and I've seen some of the motivational videos you've done, which are quite good, and I appreciate that. And we certainly appreciate all the efforts that you're putting in. I also wanted to give a shout out to our school board and thank them. We've been in the midst of community interviews that include principals, as well as some of the construction management at risk, and Mr. Vargas and several others at the board table have participated in the principal interviews, as well as some of the other pieces. And we sure appreciate all your time. We recognize you're a volunteer board, but yet you're finding time. And actually, this season, this time of the year is busy for you because you're going to have graduations, you're going to have award celebrations and recognitions that you'll be a part of, and that's quite a commitment for all of you. And I know you've got full-time jobs, and yet you still find a way, even as a volunteer school board member, to support our students, to support those activities. I also wanted to point out, in today's paper, there's a nice article about the Bryan High School Project that the school board had an update on, oh, gosh, I want to say about a month ago, a month and a half ago, and the fundraising activity that's going on with the urban ag and transportation piece, great article. Nice to see that recognition for the work they're doing there. I also wanted to mention and give a special thanks to someone who served our district for 50 years, for someone who served our district free of charge, and that's Dr. Jack Lewis from Central High School. He didn't know I was saying this tonight, but I hope he's watching. He's served as the doctor on the sidelines for 50 years. Many of you in the audience know him, he's been around for a long time. There's a great article on him in the Her Family April Edition, and it's just nice to have a community member who's been stepping up to the plate Friday night after Friday night, Tuesday night after Tuesday night. And that's the kind of community we have here in Omaha, so it's great to see that, and congratulations for all your service, and thank you for all your service. And the last note I would have is just a heartfelt thought and prayer for Dr. Renee Kerberg, who's not here tonight. Her mother passed away, and the funeral service will be tomorrow, so our thoughts and prayers as they move through that process. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. With that, are there board reports from any board members? Mrs. Fay.
Well, I actually got to hear Central's Louder Than a Bomb team a week or so ago. They performed at an event for Humanities Nebraska at Jocelyn Castle, and they did, I think, pretty much their whole program that they did at the semifinals, and no OPS teams made it into state for Louder Than a Bomb, but they were phenomenal. I mean, if, so it's a really, obviously, Louder Than a Bomb is a really fun, poetry slams are just a fun event. I went to CAC, the Special Education Advisory Committee meeting last week, and they got an update on facilities as it relates to special education. They're also getting ready to award their A-plus award, and I think that's a really, it's a great thing that the Special Education Advisory Committee awards to a regular education teacher who kind of goes above and beyond for inclusion in their classroom. So they're getting ready to do that at CAC. I wanted to give you that update. And then I also attended- And then I also attended the Human Growth and Development Forum that we had here last week. And I did write a report to you all, but if you didn't have time to read it in your email, because we get so much email. This room was packed. It was really well-attended, just walking around, kind of listening to the conversations that were going on. It was really interesting, well fought out, was really well-led by OPS district staff. And then I think there were really thoughtful, calm, intelligent discussions going on about the future of our human growth and development curriculum. So it was encouraging to have such a great turnout with a diverse body of opinions and then to have so much respect and just thoughtful conversation around that topic. So I was really pleased with the way that went.
Mr. Vargas.
Thank you. Couple of, I had an opportunity to visit Gomez Elementary. I was welcomed by one of their elementary teachers and I got to read to a few students and it was great. So very, thank you to Gomez Heritage and thank you to Principal Kempin for welcoming to their school. I also had an opportunity this past weekend to attend the Thrive Leadership Cultural Event. This has been a growing, a growing organization. It first started South, you know, working with many students in the high school, building leadership development, and it has now spread to other high schools. And this event has grown by leaps and bounds. There was a packed South High Gym that had setups from different parts of the world. So you can learn more about the different cultures that we represent in our district or represent in our schools. The students were leading the different, the different areas and arenas. They were serving food and presenting food from their, from their culture, from their heritage, from their background. And there was dances. And then we went to the auditorium. That was a packed auditorium where there was a series of dances where everybody was representing their, their country or culture background. And it was just, it was fantastic. So I'm just, kudos to South High and Principal Kempin for that, continuing to support this effort and for Thrive Leadership and the teachers involved with that and the advisors for that group that are continuing to do that great work. It's fantastic. One more, this upcoming Sunday at 2:00 PM, the Hope Awards for Latino students in our district. Those are for our middle school. Latino students being recognized for their academic achievement. I would love to see as many people as possible there. It's going to be a great event. And so, thank you.
Any other board reports? All right. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to Mr. Andrews. We have some guests that have all arrived.
Madam President, thank you very much. Tonight, we congratulate the 2015 winners of the NCJW's Mini Grants Program. The Mini Grants Program provides grant funding for public school instructors for innovative and creative classroom projects. OPS has ever, since this is something that's been going on for several years, now is grateful for the NCJW's contributions to the community and congratulates the instructors, some of whom are here tonight, who are honored by the organization this year. Would you please join me in welcoming them to the dais.
Thank you. The National Council of Jewish Women is a volunteer organization that works through the program of research, advocacy, community service, and education to improve the quality of life for women, children, and families. To that end, several of our community service projects serve the children of the Omaha Public Schools. RAFT, Resources Available for Teens, is a research directory for high school students. Reading Pups, a joint project with Domestapup, takes trained therapy dogs to elementary schools to help build confidence and improve reading skills of children. And we are an adopt-a-school partner with Jackson Elementary School. Our mini-grant project provides money to OPS teachers for innovative and creative classroom projects that are not funded by school budgets. Since 1987, we have given approximately $76,000 to grant recipients. We were excited this year to receive 20 grant applications. That speaks a lot about the dedication and excitement of OPS teachers. We were budgeted $6,000 for our mini-grant project this year, and although we wish we could have awarded every grant, they were all so great. We were able to award 12 mini-grants this year totaling $5,851.95. Our section was able to award a grant to Jackson School from our Adopt-A-School Fund for $261. We would like to present to you, Dr. Evans, and the school board, these clever, creative teachers who care enough about kids to take that extra step for their students. As we call your name and grant project, will you please come forward? Some are here, some are not. Mary Blair, Oak Valley Elementary, Westwood Girl Talk. Sherry Fisher, Wilson Focus School, Keep Yourself Energized, Motivated. Susan Mahoney, Steve Carlson, John Fleming, South High School, The Family Connection Project. Deb Goman, Western Hills Magnet Center, Speech Language Skills of the Bilingual Student. Rachel Burns, Northwest Magnet High School, Northwest Magnet High School Community Garden. Diane Lee, Sherman Elementary, Closing the Achievement Gap by Wiggle Reduction. Mako Jacobs, Adams Elementary, Education Therapy Dogs. Tracy Melanson, Botanell Elementary, Botanell Lego Club. Kelly Hyatt, Botanell Elementary, Botanell Elementary School Robotics Club. G. Anthony Baldemez, Botanell Elementary, Botanell Elementary School STEM Club. Heather Nelson, Jefferson Elementary, Take Home Books to Support LL1 Reading Intervention. Nikki Curland, Jackson Elementary, Brain Friendly Seating. Marilyn Opitz, Jackson Elementary, Discovering Nebraska History. And Sean Graham, Excel Air Program, a grant winner from last year. And this year, we are a community partner to their program, Nebraska Academy of Science and Nebraska Environmental Trust, Growing Flora of Nebraska Pollinators. And finally, I would like to recognize the following members of this year's mini-grant committee that are here this evening.
Thank you for having me here. I want to thank you, National Council of Jewish Women and Cornhusker Morer Club Foundation. Last year, they sponsored a grant fund that basically if students of low income, they didn't have transportation, they can go job shadow. So we bought bus tickets. 2013 to 2014, 18 students did this beyond the classroom. With the fund, there's 40 of them out in the public right now. That's a 267% increase, of which 11 of those students right now are UNL Cosmic Ray Observatory Project interns for the University of Nebraska-Lincoln in the Physics Department. Also, this year, they sponsored four plant species at the lab, giving back to the community $1,411.45 worth of plants that the kids grew in the lab to bring back the butterflies. Cornhuskers donated, also sponsored another six species, different species. This drove my students to do 216 and a half hours of cosmic ray investigation for the University of Nebraska and the National Science Foundation. Served Nebraska, they did 80 hours. They did 405 hours of state conservation for the butterflies. And they also got the attention of the governor of the state of Nebraska. And in the handout that I passed out, they also got a Arbor Day Foundation Graphic Department to make a flyer that anybody who wants to donate their trees goes to this project that we actually plant for Habitat for Humanity. I wanted to also introduce one of the students here. Her name's River. Her accomplishments, she's a Nebraska Academy of Science Associate. She worked on the Accelerate Madagascar Biodiversity Project in Henry Dorley's Sue Genex Department on oxidating roots of plants. She's a UNL crop intern. She has a Served Nebraska Ambassador and selected for Youth Volunteer Coordinator. And she also is a Served Nebraska Governor Proclamation Award. And the students elected her 2015 to 2016 to President of Accelerate Aquatic Society.
Accelerate opened closed doors that I thought were locked. This program opened my eyes to a bigger and brighter future. Since I've been at Accelerate, I've done numerous hands-on projects that helped me understand my education and what I wanted to do with my future in my career field. To me, Accelerate is the light at the end of the tunnel and the beginning of a bright future. I just want to thank all of you for supporting our hands-on learning.
Thank you so much. And that's a pretty impressive resume that you already have, so very, very good.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we are going to move to public comment. So the first public comment is from Ben Salazar. Please state your name, spelling of your last name, and your address. And you will have five minutes to speak. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute left and when you have 30 seconds left.
Who will? Mr. Ray? Oh. Good evening. Can you hear me? All right. Excuse my foggy nose, but the allergies have descended upon me. And good evening, by the way. My name is Ben Salazar, S-A-L-A-Z-A-R. I'm the president of the Latino Contractors Group of Nebraska, LLC, based in South Omaha. I had a handout, well, he's handing it out now, that I was going to read from. And with your permission, let me do that. With all due respect to the team of consultants and advisors who have worked long and hard to make economic opportunity a reality for the thousands of workers and their families who live and work in South and North Omaha, I am submitting a few of my own observations and recommendations based on my own 45-plus years of working in barrios and communities of color across this nation, which includes West Nebraska, Lincoln, and now Omaha for the past 25 years. The EI Plan states in part that we should consider developing policies and program activities to include employment and workforce development and student learning opportunities as part of an EI Plan in the future. With respect to this part of the EI Plan and as part of my own activities as a community activist, I have submitted a proposal to the Nebraska Crime Commission requesting matching funds for a youth job training pilot project to begin in South Omaha. In brief, the project involves the participation of Metro Community College, which has committed to providing vocational, educational portion to a group of South Omaha high school juniors and seniors who have expressed an interest in the construction trades. Metro has submitted an MOU to match my request for funding. A nonprofit organization, Neighbor Works, has offered to supply a house or houses, requiring renovation work for the students to work on as a part of their commitment to the project. The students would be paid for their investment of time and effort. The city of Omaha has been asked to participate by providing some of the funding for this project, mainly to pay the students. The project would be sponsored in part by my nonprofit organization, which is La Casa del Pueblo. It's a 501(c)(3). This project falls in accord with the EI Plan's ideology, stated as OPS may want to consider partnering with existing efforts to impact this important component of economic inclusion. Number two, my opinion on multi-discipline economic inclusion leadership team members. The team, in my opinion, appears to be top-heavy with OPS administrators and consultants. My recommendation is that this leadership team should include and not exclude community representatives. This is extremely important because it would involve ongoing community participation. This is the steering committee, community for inclusion. I'm sorry, I'm going to state it that. This is the steering committee for inclusion. After all, can we begin by including the community? Outreach activities, specifically South Omaha. Let's start by preparing some Spanish-language materials to accompany the EI effort. As a worker, activist, and president of the Latino Contractors, this is an extreme failure on the part of the EI effort to date. I haven't seen that.
One minute.
I'll speak quicker, quicker, if I can. Remember, what we're talking about here is inclusion, and I see a lack of inclusion as it respects the Latino community. Let me jump down to the bottom part here. This is a very important component, the EI Project Director, the person who will have oversight of the overall effort to diversify and for inclusion. I would hope that tonight-
Thirty seconds.
-that you will move to table that part of any resolution that you're going to consider voting on. I've added some additional comments on this because I know my time is running short. But I do hope that you table this part of the resolution, the overall concept. Table it, hold it over, and let's get some more community input on this particular part of the overall project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our second public comment is Preston Love Jr. Please state your name, spelling of your last name, and your address. And you'll have five minutes to speak. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute and when you have 30 seconds.
Good evening, everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. I will only take about 10 or 11 minutes. I want to thank you for this brief attention on my perspective on the economic inclusion as it relates to my beloved North Omaha, which I have been an advocate for over 25 years. And some of you are not even 25 years old. I have been an advocate for North Omaha for a long time. So I bring my advocacy as a point of contact with you. As you well know, poverty is the base problem and economic inclusion can make a big impact needed to begin an upward spiral brought on by decreased poverty, reduced crime and violence, and increased hope and the propensity to learn in our schools. I have been a strong supporter of the economic inclusion thrust of OPS and Jacobs to date and have held up their initiatives as a template to follow for other public institutions, with a special reference to the city of Omaha's CSO $2.3 billion project. As you may know, while supporting your effort- As you may know, while supporting your efforts, I have been extremely critical of the lack of inclusion on the part of the city. Like OPS, the city can step up and use your construction opportunities to significantly impact poverty in North and South Omaha. However, I am troubled. I am seeing signs that instead of providing a beacon of light to the city, OPS appears to be taking the city's lead on some of the areas of your inclusion plan. OPS should not look to join any inclusion partnership with the city, with the exception of tapping into the SEB certification. They have not been inclusive. The mayor is putting on a dog and pony show about inclusion. A vetted inclusion plan has not been surfaced, and her declarations of vetting are empty. Some stakeholders in my community have heard about the plan, but vetting involves details which remains uncovered. The mayor, while talking about inclusion on one hand, is throwing our major black business under the bus on the other hand. That's curious at best. Now, it is my understanding that OPS is doing their share of discrediting Dick Davis, buying into the mayor's assertions of his performance at the city. Talk of lack of performance here at OPS, and circulating a crazy letter from an uninformed and unqualified source about the Davis Companies. The mayor is proposing a one-stop shop for every professional discipline you can imagine. Sounds to me that she wants to, a nonprofit to replace a for-profit proven solution. I would hope that OPS does not join the city until the city gets its act together.
One minute.
That Jacobs' plan buys into this concept when it omits risk services from the plan that will be before you, because it minimizes an important aspect of the current Davis contract. Risk services focus on the success of submitting a bid and performing a contract at a competitive price, and is needed in any plan-
Thirty seconds.
...for a small and emerging business resulting in too little of no bond, to reduce the bond claim. Additionally, outside influence of your choice for an in-house inclusion position versus a third-party consultant should be weighed against best practices with regard to the expertise and records of inclusion. Here's hoping OPS and Jacobs will lean and not follow those who are not committed to inclusion, as you seem to be. The inclusion of risk services consideration and a third-party consultant is so important to the plan, I recommend a layover till you can study these two aspects-
That's time.
...of the plan. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Our third public comment comes from Willie Barney. Please state your name, spelling of your last name and your address, and you have five minutes, and Mr. Ray will keep you informed.
Good evening, everyone. Willie Barney, 12333 Cummings Street. First of all, there's a number of things on the agenda I wanted to touch on. First of all, I see that there's a report on the website from the Office of Equity and Diversity. Just want to recognize the great work that Jareef Lawaru has been doing and the partnerships that he's forming in the community, and it's great to see OPS recognize the importance of this office and any support and all support that can be given to him as he moves forward. In addition to that, we've had an opportunity to work closely with Jerry Corner and the Office of Student Family and Community Engagement on a number of different initiatives, including the North Omaha Credo to Career. And again, we stand and support and thank them for their support and leadership on some very important things going on in the community. I want to come and also, I mentioned at the last board meeting, how important this economic inclusion piece is, and to make sure, as the board has made this a top priority moving forward. Your efforts continue to be efforts that are leading the way, and it's vitally important because of addressing the poverty, the unemployment, and also the underemployment around the city, but specifically in North and South Omaha. We know that poverty does have a major impact on student performance, but poverty can be overcome. The other thing, when I have an opportunity to speak to an audience, that I remind people is that poverty is a measure of income. The best thing that we can do to address poverty is to increase household income. And with your initiatives, with this economic inclusion, I think you're on the path to making that happen. It's time to move this forward. It's time to move with a sense of urgency. Our community is ready to see the opportunities that can be created and have been created already with what you've done over the last three months. Specifically, what I saw on the website in the OPS Economic Inclusion Plan says that the board can move forward with an economic inclusion policy which sets the whole map for this to move forward. You're setting a specific goal. You're evaluating the bundle of scopes and looking at how you can break down contracts to make sure that smaller contractors, tier one and tier two, can be a part of that process. There's an evaluation, delivery model, and one of the other things that caught my eye is that you're looking to specifically utilize small purchases under $100,000, which will also allow for small businesses to have a better chance at getting into some of these contracts. And the biggest thing that I see is that you're to incorporate the recommendations that are in this plan into your contracting, employment, and youth development beyond the bond, which is critically important for sustainability. A couple of other things that, one thing that I would put out in front of the board, it looks like the current target is 7%, and that is a minimum. Just as a thought, as you consider moving forward with this, to consider a 10% target with a minimum of 7%? Pretty much the same, but can you set a target of 10% with a minimum of 7%? I also recognize that you're looking at hiring an internal position, and the work that I've seen over the last 10 years, 15 years, it's vitally important to have someone inside your organization, as well as it does not preclude you from having a contract with another third party. But it is vitally important to make sure that there's a point person inside your organization that is waking up every single day thinking about economic inclusion. So would support you moving forward with a project director, but which does not preclude you from also contracting with other third parties to make sure that moves forward. In addition to that, would ask that you would consider making sure that there are funds available to support outreach efforts in North and South Omaha, whether it be the youth development program talked about by Mr. Salazar, or the work that others are doing, such as Preston and others, that there would be some way to allocate support for outreach organizations to reach into the community to continue to bring additional contractors to the forefront. There is also, in the economic inclusion outline, a focus on local hiring, which is incredibly important.
One minute.
We encourage you to do that. Continue to actively seek the outreach and engagement of the community. And as I mentioned before, building the sustainability beyond the bond, there's so many things, and it's exciting to see that already, with the work that's happened in the last three months, with changing of when people can apply for opportunities, that that's been opened up. That makes it much more available to small businesses. So those are some of the things that we just stand and support, that you move forward with this project. Nothing that I see-
Thirty seconds.
-precludes you from adding additional things as you move forward, as you see, but there has to be a sense of urgency to address this poverty and unemployment, and what I've seen to date says that you can get this done and be in a leadership position. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda. Couple of items of note. When you look under claims, this time you will have noticed that there are three different claims, so it's not three different claims that you're approving. What I asked Ms. Kinoki to do was to separate out, previously we've always had alphabetical, I asked her to also do one in descending order and also one by expenditure type, so that if you were looking at it a specific way, you could pick the way that you wanted to see it. So I know descending order and expenditure type were of interest to me. So I just wanted to make a note of that. It's not that we're approving three different claims documents, they're all the same amount, it's just sorted in three different ways. And then, we have also, at Mr. Wayne's request, moved a number of items to action, so I just want to let everyone publicly know that, so that if you were looking at the agenda prior to this afternoon, it will make sense for you. So we've now got J-2D, grant fund budget adjustments, J-2E, electronics recycling services, J-2F, the bond program technology upgrade at Mars, J-2G dairy products, J-2H produce items, J-2I bread products, and J-2J money carrier services. So those will be touched on later. And with that, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Williams is our second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Fay. So motion by Ms. Williams and second by Mrs. Fay for the consent agenda as before us. Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Got it.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne. Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Eightye.
Motion carries. We will now move on to information items. So first information item is developing principal leadership, and we're going to postpone that to the next meeting. Our presenter became ill and wasn't able to be here, so we're going to move that. So we're going to move to J-1B, K-12 English Language Arts Content Standards. Looks like we have Mrs. Erickson.
As an introduction, curriculum instruction and assessment is providing an update on the state board-approved Nebraska K-12 English Language Arts standards. We have our literacy team here today, and Mrs. Shelley Erickson is going to do the presentation. The implementation of these newly revised Nebraska standards would happen in the fall of 2015, and in order to comply with the state statutes, we would like to return on May 4th for your consideration of approval.
Mrs. Erickson.
Good evening. I'm pleased to be able to come before you to share with you the newly revised K-12 English Language Arts standards for the state of Nebraska. I'm Shelley Erickson, the secondary supervisor for English Language Arts, and my illustrious team sits behind me here to present these standards. They are Mickey Holbeck, elementary supervisor, Luanne Jacobs, elementary supervisor, Heather Pash, elementary supervisor, Kristen Tipler, secondary reading supervisor, and Leah Weeks, elementary supervisor. According to Rule 10, the ELA standards are revised every five years. Okay, why am I not advancing here? Kristen, it's not advancing. I just hit that. Okay, thank you. Every five years, the standards are revised. A major revision of the standards occurred in 2009 and was adopted by the OPS Board of Education in April of 2010, and we have been operating with those standards since that time. The revision process requires the input from educators from all over Nebraska and is facilitated by the Nebraska Department of Education. Most recent revision began in November 2013 and concluded with the adoption of the standards by the Nebraska State Board of Education in September 2014. This revision process took about nine months. I was honored to be a part of the entire revision process that began with the convening of representatives from all of the institutions of higher learning in Nebraska. For two days in November 2013, we looked at the existing standards and asked ourselves whether the mastery of these standards would prepare students for the world of college and career. Using that data, a revision committee of approximately 25 individuals met to begin the revision process. Representation included teachers from each state school board district, higher education, English as a second language, special education, gifted and talented education, and career and technical education. As you can see from the slide, representatives from a variety of professional groups were also a part of this very important work. Last summer and fall, I, along with the ELA supervisor from the Lincoln Public Schools and three to four NDE staff members, met to refine and align the standards horizontally and vertically. The standards were adopted in September 2014, and in the days previous to that adoption by the state board, they were deemed as college and career-ready by the higher institutions of learning in Nebraska. Our work actually concluded in late December, when a small group of us created the crosswalks between the 2009 standards, the 2014 standards, and the Common Core state standards. Although this revision group was small, the standards were available on the NDE website throughout the summer, so all teachers could provide input. There were also opportunities to actually speak to the state school board of education regarding the standards, and they had, were able to do that from remote locations all across the state. We used that feedback to tweak the standards as necessary before they were proposed to the Nebraska State Board of Education. Now, when we look at the number of standards, you will notice on this slide that there are some increases and decreases within the standards, the big standards of reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and multiple literacies. While it appears that there is a decrease in the reading standards, what actually happened was some of the standards were combined into more economical and usable standards. So many of the reading standards complement each other that it made sense to put some of them together. The writing standards increased considerably, as did the speaking and listening, approximately six per grade, a reflection of the increased focus on 21st century collaborative skills. There is a definite increase in the rigor of the new standards. A review of the standards will demonstrate this. As I stated before, attention was given to ensuring that students would be college and career-ready when they graduated from high school. So what we actually did was we backmapped from the 12th grade and moved back into the grades to ensure that we had a reasonable and logical progression. Some of the things that were changed were standards that address academic honesty in one's writing. This would span both the writing and multiple literacy standards. The need for reading and writing stamina, as well as a focus on the recursive nature of writing and research skills were also addressed. Although the reading of informational text has always been present, and very present in the previous standards, this time this skill is further aligned to research writing and the use of textual evidence to support arguments and claims. Additionally, argumentation as a mode with evidence from a text becomes a mode of writing in high school, while persuasion has been pushed down into middle school. Finally, an increased focus on listening and speaking support the idea that collaboration is a valued life skill that is important both professionally and personally. I referred earlier to the alignments. You might wonder why we aligned the standards to both the 2009 ELA standards and the Common Core state standards. We do have that document, and we will send that to you so you can see what it looks like. This is a very valuable document for our Nebraska teachers. This will help them to be able to identify the new standards and align them with their existing materials and lessons that are aligned to the earlier standards. Because almost all materials being published today are aligned to the Common Core state standards, teachers need to be familiar with that, so that when they have a resource that is based on the Common Core, they can look at this crosswalk and say, well, this is the Common Core standard, I can use this lesson, because in Nebraska, it's this standard. So that crosswalk will be a very, very important piece as we look at curriculum and tweak our curriculum in the coming year. Our implementation plan, of course, starts with a lot of communication with our teachers. We're going to be training some of our teachers to become trainers on the standards. We'll be using our curriculum days in the coming year, Saturday workshops, coaching, to work with our teachers on understanding and using the standards. The development of student and parent-friendly standards will take place in June for two days, and those will be available on- days, and those will be available on the NDE website, and the standards will also be translated into Spanish. Those are both NDE-directed activities. Curriculum revision will occur as a precedent to our adoption and purchase of materials and resources, with implementation to occur subsequent to that process. The standards are what drive our curriculum. So now that we have the standards, we will be reviewing curriculum and making adjustments as we see, as that is necessary. We are also providing teachers to participate in the NISA R writing, item writing, for new passages and questions to be field-tested in the next year. With new standards, the assessment pieces are also being evaluated. So they are going to be writing this summer, new items for the new standards for NISA R. Now, they will not be used for several years, but they probably will be field-tested next spring at this time. This concludes the update on the standards. On May 4th, we will request approval of the standards from the Omaha Public Schools Board of Education and would seek to ask you to adopt the 2014 K-12 Nebraska Language Arts standards. If there are any questions, please feel free to ask and we'll see what we can do to answer.
Okay, well, first of all, I want to thank you for your involvement in this. I got to hear all about it last year during baseball season, so I know she was very, very busy with helping the state with these language arts standards. So I, we certainly appreciate the opportunity to have OPS at the table in such a significant way.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Evans.
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to express my thank you to all the staff that have been involved in this and look forward to the adoption. And just in addition to that, just for the public's knowledge and also for the board, I've had several conversations with teachers, principals, the principal advisory group, and also with our executive directors in relationship to grammar. It's kind of separate, actually, from our, our language arts standards, but I wanted the board to know that we will be looking at particularly primary and intermediate grammar curriculum and some of the pieces and parts that I'm hearing from some of our teachers, and I'm sure I'm going to be engaging many of you with some of the comments and conversations I've had from our teachers and administrators on some of the gaps that they're seeing. So I wanted the board to be aware of that. I don't really have answers today. I have more questions than answers, but we're going to be investigating that in near future. So it's kind of related to it since it certainly is a language arts piece. So appreciate all your effort. Thank you.
Mr. Vargas.
Thank you very much. I just want to echo thanks for, this is a, it's not an easy process, reviewing standards and doing crosswalks and determining rigor and, you know, I think one of the big changes that we're seeing in public education right now is around the issue of college and career standards and improving our standards and improving rigor and Common Core standards. I am very pleased with seeing Nebraska and our teachers take leadership in this process. Obviously, we have to, but we're also, we're doing it ourselves. I think that's an important step in the right direction. I also am really happy to hear an emphasis on implementation. You know, we have had the benefit of seeing other states learn, to learn from their mistakes, obviously use the word mistakes, for how they've implemented new changes in standards and new changes in assessments, especially when you're designing new assessment items, that it is a really big change for teachers. This is not something that can be taken lightly, so I appreciate seeing this emphasis to really do the train-the-trainer model. Obviously, we have a little ramp up until the assessment items are used for any type of, have any actual bearing on a teacher, on a school, or on a, on a student. And so I love that we're seeing teacher support, school support, principal support, because that's the piece that other states have struggled mightily with, and this is going to be a big change for teachers, and I want to make sure that they have the support. So thank you very much for the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. One more thing. If you can add the cross, if we can add the crosswalk to this so that it can be, you know, the public can see the crosswalk, and teachers can, can, can reference it relative to this on the item that we have on the Board of Ed website, that'd be great.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here and presenting. Thank you.
Wonderful. Next, we will go to committees of the board update. So what I did was ask Mr. Ray just to put all the committees on. Some will have a report, some may not have a report. The Accountability Committee, just so that everybody understands what that is, is the superintendent evaluation, and then hopefully a tool for board self-evaluation. We will be meeting this coming Friday, and if you haven't seen it, I sent out an email with lots of links to different superintendent evaluation tools from around the country. So the goal is that we can start working on that. We need to submit our superintendent evaluation tool to the Nebraska Department of Education, and that will need to be done either at the last meeting in May or the first meeting in June, and then we'll have the superintendent's evaluation the second meeting in June. So just wanted to give that update. Budget and audit has not met since our last, well, I guess we met right before our last board meeting, and Mrs. Kenoke is continuing to meet with all the principals and develop budgets, and we will be meeting again in May. We have not met on communication since the last board meeting. We meet again in May. The policy committee has not met. I would like us to try to get through policies as a whole, as a committee of the whole board, before we start through revisions. Americanism, do you have a report?
No, none at this time. We will be meeting in May.
Okay. Student Assignment Plan. And we did meet after the community meeting, so I'll let, now, I'm just going to let Ms. Williams give an update, but Mrs. Underwood is not here, so she's not here to give the update. We went through the, the information that the community members gave to us. We didn't have that many online responses, about 30 online responses, and I'm looking back there at Scott, I think we had fewer than 300 people at all of the, at all of the community meetings. But we put together the information, and we will be having a workshop next week on Thursday night. So for anyone who wants to attend that, does it start at 6? Is that what time we have it on? 5:30 on Thursday evening. So for anyone who wants to attend that, let's see, I think we have a, do we have a legislative? Do you want to do that legislative during update, or do you want to do it now? I don't think John's, is John here?
I have seen him.
Okay. We'll do that. We'll move legislative till later. Construction Manager at Risk, Mr. Vargas.
Thank you. For the last several weeks, we have been engaging in our, sort of initial interviews and the process for CM at Risk for Ponca Elementary, which has been a learning experience, I think, for all of us that have been on the committee and have been on the Interview and Selection Committee around what are both statute within Nebraska for how to approach CM at Risk proposals, and also what does this mean for the quality of, of, of the work that we are looking for when we're trying to make, make our, improve our schools and improve, and improve all across our district, our, our facilities. And so for the last couple of weeks, we actually engaged at the Ponca Elementary. We have completed the, the interview process for working for the, for the Ponca Elementary, CM at Risk. And so where we are right now, just to give you a little background on, on the process, because I think it's actually really helpful, there's a, a committee of, of individuals that included staff members, me, a board member, a parent, the principal at Ponca, and a few others that were charged with the making sure we were reviewing and assessing the qualifications of each of the construction managers, and then also reviewing the proposal that they put forward for each of the project managers. And this is a, there's guidance from, from statute, but we, you know, working with Jacobs and, and Mr. Cobb, we did have a very, I would say, a very concrete and data-driven way to evaluate each firm, grounded in a set of competencies and a set of qualities that we expect the, the construction manager to have. This included financial resources, their past work performance, quality, time performance, safety, rules and regulations. And I think this one piece, which gets to the public comment we've heard and other things on, on, on our, on our agenda, is economic inclusion program. And so we independently rated each of the, the proposals and the qualifications of each of the firms prior to our interviews. We aggregated our independent scores on each of these items, which then gave us a ranking of each of the individual firms. From there, we used that to then, we, we used that, we then went into interviews and we used the same criteria to then evaluate the firms based on the proposal they provided and an interview, which was about an hour. And so we, we interviewed three firms, and it was about a half-long process. I know Mr. Evans was there with us observing. It was great to have other individuals that were, wanted to be part of the project. And it was just a very robust process, and I appreciate it being a part of it. And I think we have, we are in the process right now, working with Jacobs. Our staff is completing, preparing the, the final proposal to bring to the board. And again, what is, I think, unique about this is we are selecting this construction manager based on their qualifications, and then obviously, we're going to work around the proposal they're bringing forward and, and obviously, the dollar amount they're putting. But I, I am confident in this choice we are making, and I'm also confident that we'll be able to put a good number behind this that we think is going to get us the quality and is also not going to break the bank for us. So that is the update on Ponca. And, oh, one other thing that I think is interesting, it was extremely helpful, we had a parent on our committee that engages his entire process and they're on their own accord, which I thought was amazing, and it was extremely helpful to have their perspective and have their input in this process.
That's great. Next, we will go to the Specialty Schools Review and Recommendations Committee.
The SSRR Committee actually meets, will meet for the first time this Thursday at 4:00 PM, so I'm really excited to meet and remember what the RR stands for. I always forget the review and recommendations, so sorry, Mr. Ray.
Let's see. Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, any update?
We haven't had a meeting since my last update. It meets Thursday, this Thursday at 10:30.
Okay, great. I don't think the Priority Based Budget Advisory Group has met either, so Code of Conduct, Mr. Snow.
Thank you. We met last week on, was it Monday? Friday. Forgot already. The main, main purpose of the meeting was really taking that K through 12 intervention, levels of intervention, and spreading that through K through 12, so the four levels of intervention. So we talked about that, how that could affect kids from grade seven to 12. Basically, one set of rules. It's a lot simpler for principals and parents, especially coming from elementary school, going to middle school and high school. I removed some material from the code that wasn't relevant to the Code of Conduct. We added some wording regarding SROs, and we really started to have a discussion on how do we lay this out to the public and how do we have more community input? And I believe on April 30th, we're having a community meeting with the 500 individuals we met over within February. And Mr. Ray, where is this meeting at? I'm sorry. He looks into the crowd.
We'll get that to you.
Oh, thank you. But I strongly urge you guys, I understand at the same time, there's a student assignment plan meeting as well, but if I can toot my horn, I would strongly suggest you go to the Code of Conduct meeting. But it's not the last of meetings. It's an ongoing process that we realize, and this is just the first step. And we're eventually start, starting that process on how do we apply more interventions in the high school and middle school levels, and how do we track those? So if something's not really working, we scrap that and we go with those that are working. So I think our next meeting hasn't been scheduled yet, but after April 30th, we'll have more results that we can actually pass out to the board from the surveys. So, thank you. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Just one question. So you said you were looking at K-12?
Yes.
Can we look at, we just had a discussion, board team meetings, and looking at potentially, and I, so I'm asking you, if you could look at in committee pre-K-12, what does that look like? Just, we've had lots of conversations, so it was a perfect time that you guys met, but making sure that we're setting the standards early.
Yeah, setting expectations early. So it's, I completely agree.
Thank you.
We're going to add that to that.
Awesome. Thank you.
He's got it. Okay. And OSERS has not met since the last board meeting. So with that, we will move on to Office of Community School and Family Engagement update for Mr. Corner.
Community and the Office of Community School and Family Engagement, good evening. I want to thank you for this opportunity to provide an update. This office was born out of the needs analysis and realized August 1st, 2014, as a result of the implementation of our current strategic plan. Since our inception, we've had the opportunity to create a new logo that symbolizes collaboration and achievement. Our goal is to serve in this office. We plan to continue to raise the bar and to put our best foot forward. The strategic focus of this office is based on our mission and vision. As you read the mission and vision, I would like to highlight in our mission the word empowerment. Empowering our stakeholders, our classroom teachers, our administration, and our community to support the work of this district. As you read our vision, I would like to highlight the word proactive. We want to be on the front end of that work. So far, I'd like to say we're doing a darn good job of it. I'd like to introduce you to our current often, office goals. As you read through those, in consideration of number one, these are those activities informed by best practices that will help us take next steps in mending relationships as a district. As you read through goal number two, these are those activities carried out in a way that will build mutual trust. Mutual trust that opens the door to lasting relationships. Goal number three would be one that I would identify as a standalone goal. We want to identify, promote, and foster positive site partnerships that support student and family well-being. As you know, this year has been a year of major transition for the Omaha Public Schools District, so I'd like to talk to you a little bit about your SSLs. 2013, 14, the Office of Student and Family Services was disbanded, and what you formerly knew as SPAS are now SSLs. SSL stands for School Support Liaison. During this transition, our office has assumed a leadership role with these administrators. There are 29 SSLs serving 57 schools and seven programs. In accordance with the outcomes of our needs analysis and the implementation of our strategic plan, these individuals were relocated from central office to their respective school locations. Each SSL does serve two buildings, and we do ask them to report back Each SSL does serve two buildings, and we do ask them to report back to Central Office to assist the district during enrollment periods and for professional development. In the school buildings, these individuals serve as part of the attendance team. They support with student discipline needs, parental involvement and engagement activities, community support and for initiatives, and they participate in instructional coaching. Additional transitions that have occurred during this year is the realignment of the Student Placement Office. These individuals now in buildings are asked to do additional work in service to schools, students, and families. They are pulled to do additional activities as related to community initiatives and strategic plan initiatives, which I'll speak more about later. Before I go any further into this update, I'd like to take a moment to speak about some very important people, my leadership team. First, I would like to introduce you to Mr. Tim Hamilton. Tim is our office administrator, as well as our district hearing officer. Next, I would like to introduce you to Ms. Annie McFarlane. Annie is our student placement supervisor. Last but not least, I'd like to introduce you to Ms. Crystal Boyd. She is our community engagement specialist. So, what do we do in the Office of Community School and Family Engagement? Well, this isn't exhaustive, but this will give you some examples of the type of activity that we do. We enroll all of the students across the entire district. We provide transportation special exception assistance to families and schools. Our office manages the due process hearings. We manage all of the referrals and investigations and complaints that are filed formally against a school or an administrator. We are responsible for the professional development needs of the school support liaisons, as well as the family room liaisons. Those are Title I workers that are positioned in Title I schools. We manage the Adopt a School Partnership Program. We manage the Community Academic Achievement Awards, one of which was mentioned by Mr. Vargas and will happen this weekend. It's been really nice to see our executive directors and other members of our executive council out at those meetings. So far, we've had about 2,500 families come out and participate in these events. It really makes them feel good to see their children honored and to see the district collaborate with our community organizations to achieve that end. So, thank you. Additionally, this office participates in many of the strategic plan initiatives, which I'll touch on a little bit further later in the update. A few of the new developments and impacts, since launching this office, office again August 1st, 2014, we have developed an annual School Support Liaison Professional Development Agenda. Over the course of 2014, 2015, we've been able to offer 11 workshops and trainings to our SSLs. We have developed a School Support Liaison Advisory Committee, as this is a new position to help us inform training needs and strategic planning for the upcoming school year. We have devised a document for placement staff to support non-SSL schools with their transportation needs and to provide in-house training to those staff as needed. Our office has implemented a weekly referrals review that happens each Tuesday, where we put eyes on every single referral that comes through the district. And we make determinations as to whether all the content is in that referral that needs to be for us to consider it closed. We find that as an opportunity to give praise to those administrators who have done an awesome job and provide redirection to those who need it, as well as reach out to our community members to follow up on the outcomes of the referral as written on the document. We have created and provided training on our referrals and investigations flow chart that informs district-level administration on information they need to know regarding the referrals process. And we are dotting the i and crossing the t on the development of our band and bar process, which provides guidelines to our district-level administration and now provides an opportunity for appeal to our community at large. One example of that proactive empowerment we seek to do. Our office is involved in quite a few strategic planning initiatives, again, not exhaustive. But I am the Work Group One Lead for the district. Our title is Safe, Healthy, and Engaged Students. That is the culmination of administrators from across the district and across departments coming together to address various strategic plan topics, strategies, and issues. This office has worked long and hard with the Strategic Plan, excuse me, with the Student Assignment Plan Committee. We've had the wonderful opportunity to host nine small group meetings with students, parents, and community organizations from across the metro to help inform the direction of our new student assignment plan. We've also had an additional five large group meetings with our stakeholders. I would like to just extend a special thanks to many of our board members that I've seen during some of those late nights, sometimes cold nights, sometimes rainy nights. Thank you very much. It really means a lot to our community when they see you guys present, listening to their grassroots feedback to the district. In addition, this office has had the opportunity to organize and coordinate 12 small group meetings with those same stakeholders, students, administrators, community organizations regarding our student Code of Conduct. The goal there is for us to wrap up with two large group meetings to provide outcomes information to our community at large later in the month. Additional things that we do in our office is we host the four annual District Citizens' Advisory Council meetings held at Lewis and Clark. This is the culmination of our PTO/PTA presidents and vice presidents coming to one location to have mutual district-level conversation with our superintendent and others. They then take that information back to their respective schools and ensure that that population is informed. We also host community leadership breakfasts. This is the opportunity for individual communities to come and to have a seat at the table and hold specific conversation with our superintendent regarding their needs, concerns, issues, as well as to hear from our superintendent regarding district-level issues. Another thing that we do in this office is we host the Community Academic Achievement Awards in collaboration with multiple community-based organizations. We host five such awards each year, the 5A Award, the Hasi Award, the Awesome Award, the Hope Award, and the Native American Awards. I want to again, thank many of you who have made yourselves available to attend these meetings. Again, our executive directors and members of our executive council, who oftentimes provide the welcome at these events, and they participate for the duration. They hand out certificates to students and families and they shake hands, and they encourage those students to keep working hard. Community initiatives. Some community initiatives that this office is involved in includes Cradle to Career. This is a national initiative spearheaded locally by our Empowerment Network, but consists of a large variety of organizations from across the metro, ranging from civic to medical. Another initiative is the Omaha African-American Male Achievement Collaborative. Very exciting update regarding this. This is an effort to match each of our African-American males who are in sixth grade, living in ZIP code 68111 with a mentor. It is a collaboration between the City of Omaha, Omaha Public Schools, 12 partnering mentoring agencies, and the Empowerment Network. As recently as Friday, we received word that there are 24 matches and we are still waiting for some information to come in through the mail. Just, you know, that number could very well be higher, but that's, that's not a bad start. We are hosting in collaboration with PRI, which is Policy Research and Innovation, Nebraska's Family Collaborative, and Omaha Public Schools District, supported by the Office of Community School and Family Engagement and the Office of Equity and Diversity, a series of discussions on cultural humility. We had our first discussion on April 16th. There were approximately 63 direct service providers from the surrounding area that came to participate in this discussion. Very exciting work. The goal here is to take a look at potentially setting up some local training on this, and it speaks to cultural responsiveness. Another thing that we're doing here, that is a community initiative, is we are establishing a social mixer and roles discussion between our SSLs, who are direct service providers, and NFC. They're very excited about it. We're very excited about it. We believe that this will help us to build positive relationships, tear down walls and silos, to help us better serve our families. A final example, again, not exhaustive, of the types of community initiatives we're involved in in this office would be Project Help. This is funded by Omaha World Herald's Good, Omaha World Herald's Goodfellows Foundation. And the purpose of this program is to assist low-income families with getting some of those clothing items that they need for winter, coats, hats, gloves, things of this sort. It's been, it's been an interesting ride. It's been a lot of fun. The opportunity to serve, there's nothing like it, in my opinion. I have a few photos here, a little hard to see. The one on the top left is a picture of our DCAC. That's Mr. Superintendent Evans working the AV system, and you have, sorry about that. I thought it's a little more, it's a little easier to see here close. But again, you have Mr. Evans working the AV system. You have Ms. Fay in the background discussing the bond, and she's kind of passing the baton with, with President Gotti. They're talking about the bond. On your bottom left, that is a small group community discussion regarding our student assignment plan. And to your right, one that I take exception with, this is the Yates Parents Group that came out to share their input on the student Code of Conduct. 110 parents showed up to share their thoughts, ask questions, and I believe there were six different languages spoken that day. They found a way to ask their questions, and we found a way to get them answers. In wrapping up, I'd like to thank the Board for allowing this office to provide an update this evening. And I would also like to sincerely thank you for your tireless work to help this district take next steps in achieving student achievement. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, are there questions? Mrs. Fay.
Well, thank you for the presentation and for taking on the challenge of developing this position in this office that previously didn't exist in this format. So, I know that that's always a big challenge when you have to kind of create something from scratch. And I hope that you've gotten, feel that you've gotten the support that you need to do that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I have a question, and I think it would just be helpful for me because it's a new office, going back to the goals on slide, whatever it is, towards the beginning, slide three, I think. You listed, later on in the presentation, you listed some new impacts and then also some community initiatives, new things that are coming out of your office. And I'm wondering if the next time you present to us, so maybe after the first of the year, after you've had this role for an entire year, and then some, if maybe there could be some measurable goals attached to these, so that we can go back and look at those, all those new things that you're doing and say, looking at your first goal, for example, increase family engagement activities. It would be great for me to know that where you were when you started with those family engagement activities, and not just what you added, but you know, how many, or how, what the increase in engagement was. I mean, just to be able to add some kind of number to that would be helpful as we're measuring the growth and the impact that this office is having. To identify, promote, and foster positive site partnerships, to, again, to, you listed lots and lots of partnerships in there, so if that's your baseline, you know, what are some new ones that you have identified and that you're promoting in addition to the ones that you're maintaining? So, those, you know, I don't need to go through each of your goals, but as you, as an office, set your goals, having some measurable target that, that I think will help you and your office, and it'll help us understand how this office is working and the impact that it's having. I have one other question.
Absolutely.
So, it's a little bit more specific. When you were talking about the daily review or weekly review of referrals, I can't remember which one you said it was. We heard, in my previous service on this, this board with, under other leadership, we heard often about how the district works in silos, and there's not a lot of collaboration and communication across those silos. So, I'm wondering if that review, and this is just one example, perhaps it, it happens in other areas of your work, but in that one specifically, as you're reviewing referrals, are you able to maybe identify patterns or identify specific areas of concern that you can then work with, like the Code of Conduct Committee, or you know, some other areas where you can say, this is an area we identify, and maybe it's something we need to address?
Yes, we are, specifically with our executive directors at this time in the development of our office. And when we see those patterns, whatever they may be, we're able to take that information up to that level, communicate about next steps, what we have done, what they would have us do, and we get it done. So, yes.
Well, I hope you would also provide maybe some recommendations and solutions. So, if there's something that's coming up again and again, you're identifying a pattern, then maybe, maybe that's something that needs to be revisited in one of these other areas. And I just picked on that one because, I think maybe because Mr. Snow just gave a presentation on Code of Conduct, but you know, maybe that's something that we need to address from another angle, so that, and then you, in your regularly scheduled referrals, will be able to say whether or not that change had an impact, and we're seeing those go down then.
I see.
So, that's, I think, the kind of collaboration that I hope to see, you know, more communication and, and again, setting some hard goals that we can come and again, setting some hard goals that we can come back in a year and say, look, look what this office has done and look at the impact that it's having in all of these areas that fall underneath your direction. So do you report to the, you keep talking about the executive directors, is that, you report or do you report to superintendent? I don't have the flowchart memorized, I apologize.
I report directly to the executive directors.
Exact, to all four?
All four.
Wow. Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, Mr. Wayne?
I was just wondering, do you know how many suspensions, reassignments, expulsions you reviewed this year? And if you don't have that information, you can just email it to the board, that'd be great.
I'll do that, Mr. Wayne, thank you.
Mr. Snow?
Thank you, Madam President. I just had, just two questions. I'll start with the first one, with the strategic plan, 2.4, is that your department?
No, that is not.
That is not your department. But it talks about the decreased percentage of students with multiple suspensions. What department does that sit under?
I'm sorry, I couldn't answer that.
I'm just, that goes probably to Mr. Evans, which department does 2.4 sit under? Because when I read 2.4, and you could answer this later, or Mr. Ray will answer it later, 2.4 to me looks like that should sit under this department here. When it talks about training of teachers, different alternatives to suspensions, de-escalation problems, physical altercations, some, if it's not completely under there, how do they play a role in that? Training teachers, how to deal with students from different backgrounds. That's, that was probably my biggest issue with this is I didn't really see in your plan, where in the strategic plan that you guys are focusing on to accomplish. And that could probably help me out if you could list those points on there, but you know, the number of students. So, just, go ahead.
Let me see if I can try to answer that. I think there's a multiplicity of departments that have different roles and functions in that. For example, suspensions occur at the school building and so who works with the principal and provides support and training with principals? It's mostly the EDs. And then they're working collaboratively with all the other departments, whether that's the CIA group that's looking at multi-tiered systems of support, which I know we've talked about that, on some of the behavioral improvement management systems that they're studying right now that they'll bring back to the whole group, which is inclusive of EDs and Jerry will have probably a role in understanding some of that too. It's not, it's not one singular department because it's kind of a dispersed responsibility, especially the multiple areas you mentioned. Now, some of those areas might break down into a specific area. If you're looking at behavioral interventions, then we're going to send a team of people that represent CIA, may or may not have a member of Jerry's staff on it, it's going to have some EDs involved, going to have some principals involved, because we want principals involved. And we're looking at resolution of behavioral issues in the school. It's always, always going to be a part of our plan to include our principals. So it's not just one department, I guess that's what I would say.
Thank you. Because, I mean, it says for here, and Mr. Vargas pointed out again, train executive directors, a principal supervision, and appropriate office staff to support implementation of tiered interventions. So where, where does that sit and how do we, in my opinion, really focus in on this? If you answer to the executive directors, how do you implement training the executive directors in here? But you said it's multiple departments. All right, my last question is, these are the only people in your office, is that correct?
These are members of my leadership team.
Of your leadership team?
Yes.
Does security, is that under your department?
No, it is not.
Mr. Evans, where does security sit?
Security would report to the building principal, but the district person would be Roddy Miller, who works with Dr. Turnquist's operations office. So it's kind of, if you're a school security person in school A, your direct report is your principal, but the overall responsibility of helping develop and train security is going to be with Roddy as she helps, she helps plan the training in conjunction, again, with the EDs and again, you're trying to do all of that. We're not, one of the big things we're working on is to not do things in silos. We want every group to understand, here's the mission, here's what we're trying to accomplish. And training that occurs at a principal's meeting, Roddy may have supported it from a district level of research on SRO training, on security training, which we've done some training and done some meetings over the last year. But it would be done in conjunction with the EDs, who are responsible for helping plan the principal's meeting, which occur on a monthly basis and sometimes more than that. For example, we did, we did training with all staff on sexual, inappropriate sexual conduct, basically because across the nation, including right here in this district and other districts in the metro area, we see adults who make mistakes and do things that are inappropriate and so we wanted all staff trained. That was a joint effort that was inclusive of EDs, inclusive of what would be Jerry's office, inclusive of all of our principals, but we collectively did that as part of it and it aligns with the strategic plan on safe and secure environment. So I don't know if that helps explain it. It's not, it's not a singular, isolated, siloed piece and we're really working hard to try to create more. And we're not there yet. I mean, I, this is eight months that Mr. Corners has been in this role, so I want everyone to be aware of that too. This is not a lengthy tenure here. Mr. Corners has been serving in this capacity for about eight months, so we're still transitioning and developing and figuring that integration out.
I, I thank you for that. I understand it's a new department, so you got to get the cobwebs out and understand where your footing is. But to me, in my opinion, I, when I see this department, I'm still kind of, it's kind of confused when, if I, going back to what they do in, from the strategic plan, their actual task, and then also the security aspect on if that, if your job is suspensions and working with the student code, why isn't security in your department or you have some relation with that? And then another thing, if I'm a parent and I complain to a teacher and it's not resolved, I complain to the principal, it's not resolved, and then I complain to the ED. I mean, I have an issue with, with my child, so I'm complaining all the way up, so it's not being resolved, but then I go to the Office of Community and School and Family Engagement. But how does that work if I went to the ED and it wasn't resolved, but then I go back to Community School Engagement, but they answer to the EDs? It seems like they, this department should be a little bit independent. Does that make sense?
Let me see if I can, I'll take a stab at it. If it's a complaint about a teacher, a parent has a concern, let's say a concern about a teacher, that's going to go to Jerry's office. They've got a concern about a teacher and Jerry and staff are going to do the investigation. If it's a complaint about the principal, because the parent went through the, through the teacher, complaint, concern wasn't answered there, concern wasn't answered with Jerry, goes to the principal, still the concern's not answered, then it goes to the ED. So the ED's role is above that and then if the concern's still not answered, then it's going to my office. Although, a lot of times, people just go right to my office, which we'd rather they kind of work on, at the lowest possible level to try to answer concerns. For example, a lot of times they haven't even talked to the teacher they're concerned with and you, you try to get them to meet there, the lowest possible level, but sometimes that happens, sometimes it doesn't, sometimes they call you guys too. So, and haven't even talked to the teacher or principal. So that's kind of the chain of command on that piece, is you're trying to get it resolved lowest possible level. If it's a teacher issue, it's here in this office. If it's a principal issue and the parent is concerned there, then it's going to the ED. And then if it's an ED issue, because they're still not concerned, then it's going here. So that's kind of the progressional piece of that.
Thank you. I just, I talked about this before, creating some type of flowchart for parents, that is needed.
Yes, sir.
So if I do have a complaint, I know where to go. You know, everything you explained, if that's the way it is, so I know where to go, so I'm not, so I understand the pathways, that if I have an issue, I go here, and if it's not resolved, I go here and here's my alternatives and options. Thank you.
Mr. Vargas?
Thank you very much. So, thank you also for everything that you guys do, I've been to any of your events, which I, it's clear there's community engagement and we're seeing outcomes in a qualitative sense. My, my ask is actually along the same lines as Ms. Fay. You know, one, one piece of the, sort of the, the change management, changing the culture of a district and what was a huge change in why we did the strategic plan was to be as grounded as possible in data and I think, wanting to see more of the, how we're measuring the impact of our work even at each discrete department so that we are being able to align this more readily to our strategic plan and not relying on end-of-year indicators. Otherwise, we are not benchmarking how, you know, how each department or how each initiative is actually doing its work and we're just waiting for a year till it happens. So it would be helpful the next time we have an update that it's, we're hearing more on, you know, climate survey, parent climate survey data from some of these, you know, meetings we have, workshops. If you're setting quarterly goals around this type of data, I'm not sure if, who sets the, these goals with you or these metrics on how you measure the performance of you and your team? If that's all four executive directors or one that is actually playing that role for you? But I think it's just, it's a larger trend and I think this gets a little bit to what Mr. Snow is asking. How are we, if we can't directly align a strategy to a department, which I think it does make sense because there's shared responsibilities over goals, that we need to be able to at any different time, identify a goal and a metric that each program and or department is, is aligning themselves to, is trying to shoot for? And the more quantitative or qualitative, some data-driven piece we can get, the easier it is for us as board members to communicate to our constituents the impact of the work month to month, quarter to quarter, and adjust course as needed. And so it will be extremely helpful to see that and I think that's something, hopefully we can also hear from more of our departments and more updates as we get them, because that, that's what I'm be, I, you know, we've had conversations about this. We had our board workshop and again, I'm still reminded of our, you know, data-driven, being data-driven is the role of a board and when we don't have all the data, it, we feel like we're asking more questions and it's just a lot easier. So that'd be really helpful, you know, moving forward. This way we can communicate the impact of the work that these new, these great new departments and roles and people are doing. And it also helps us to see how we, what support you need as you grow and develop and evolve, because again, it's a somewhat uncharted territory as we're creating new departments or we're revamping departments to meet a different need. I want to make sure that we are meeting your needs. We can't know what your needs are. We can know your needs are when you tell us, but we also, we want to be able to quantify and qualify those needs are going to have an impact on things, like you said, around like the number of parents that say they feel like they're safe welcoming environment, right? And again, I don't want to wait till the end of the year, having these quantitative conversations around this language that we drafted together as a community. So hopefully we can get to a place where we use that more, much more often than we are now.
Yes, sir. That is the goal. Thank you.
Okay, great. I took some notes, so I'll give those to Mr. Ray to follow up with everybody. Thank you very, very much. With that, we're going to move on to the equity and diversity update. Mr. Sharif Laroux.
Just start with that. My name is Sharif Laroux, I am the Director of the Office of Equity and Diversity. I want to share information with you regarding our office and what we are working on. Starting off with our objectives and our purpose, getting directly into it, because my whole little color front, you know, had like pictures and everything like that. But I'll just go straight into this. Our office focus would be designing and implementing strategies to integrate inclusion and educational equity into all aspects of the OPS mission and culture. And specifically as a route to do that, or a purpose for that, would be the student achievement and moving forward to promote inclusive environments that meet the needs of all stakeholders in the district's communities. And looking at that as a district-wide community, as well as looking at that as the specific areas of our community that we have. Overall focus in terms of support of student learning, that is the focus of our office. We do so through these particular areas. One is building staff capacity to institutionalize racial equity and cultural relevancy. Next, we're looking at effectively implementing practices that achieve and sustain equitable student achievement. And this is talking about the student achievement right now, as we look at it, there's predictably, we're seeing predictability in some of the achievement areas and our job is to be able to implement practices that make sure that we are all attaining at the same level of excellence and expectation. Also in our area, we're looking at supporting the recruitment, hiring and support and retention of teachers, administrators, and staff of color. That is vital for the district's administration and teachers be closer representative, have a closer representation to the students that we serve in our district. And so our work is to support that. Also looking at increasing and improving cultural competency of all teachers, administrators, and staff. And this also moves into cultural relevancy and also cultural response, meaning what are we doing now that we are aware of some of the cultural biases that we may have or some of the ideas that we're bringing to the table? Not only, competency must include a responsiveness. How are we behaving in a different fashion that'll be beneficial for all of our students? We're looking at ensuring funding and other resources are allocated equitively between schools. This is very important when we're looking at equity, not equality. There is a very, very important difference and many people are not aware of that. And in our district, it's important that as we make decisions, we're taking a look at what equitable, or what impacts those are having on our districts and district schools and if we are being appropriately responsive to that. Also within the supporting student learning, we are developing student engagement and learning opportunities regarding diversity, inclusion. It's not only important to recognize that we have diversity within our district, it's not, it's important that we are looking for ways in which we include the variety of diversity in different perspectives, ethnic, cultural, racial inclusion in terms of our work. And so how do we make sure that we're improving communication with the community to make sure that we're inclusive in those areas? Where am I at? So, the verifying textbooks are and curricula is adapted to be culturally responsive and inclusive. We want to make sure that as our students are going through this very diverse district, that we are seeing that our curricula that are offered to the students, that the books that they see when they're going through the classes, the lessons that they're learning are tied into and reflective of the communities that they come from. That when our students are looking in the books, they're not just seeing a Eurocentric perspective, but they're seeing a perspective that includes the diversity that we see within our district. This way they're taking advantage of the opportunity that they have of being in OPS, which is that we have communities and languages spoken from all over. We need to make sure that we take advantage of that for our students to truly prepare them for where they need to be. We also examine OPS curriculum and teaching to ensure that they are effective and relevant to the students of all backgrounds. Relevance is important. We want our students also graduating knowing what they need to know about history from a variety of perspectives. We also need to make sure that they understand the context in which they fit. And oftentimes our students disconnect when they do not feel as if the curriculum reflects what they have experienced and/or they do not see it as we know, your education always has to be relevant. And so we want to make sure that it's culturally relevant as well. And finally, representing OPS in community groups reflecting our diversity. And so giving an opportunity for myself to be at and participate in different community events and projects and make collaborations with those partners is vital and important to the role of our office. We have five key areas in which we are able to implement these strategies. Training and resources being one, providing equity, inclusion, cultural proficiency, and EEO training, induction and orientation for our new staff personnel, cultural awareness training for our existing personnel, also making sure that we have culturally responsive professional development. Professional development's important because as we talk about our existing workforce and the 8,000 employees that we have, it is important that from the top down, we truly understand how to be culturally responsive. We currently are working with the Minnesota Humanity Center, provide some of those resources. Another opportunity is with Pacific Educational Group, another group that has had success in courageous conversations about race and those conversations have helped to move the needle forward when we're talking about disparities that are within some of the performance areas. The next one is advocacy and advisory groups. Several of these, Omaha Student Voices Council is a beginning project that is one that we were able to were able to take the initial step for their leadership development and take them down to Selma, Alabama for the 50th anniversary of the march to Montgomery. And those students came back and started working with their schools immediately on social action, civic engagement and leadership development within their buildings. And then we had our first meeting last week amongst those students as well as others who were selected to be part of this council. They represent all of the schools and the Blackburn Building. We're looking for student representation on the Blackburn Program side, but we were able to have student representation from the Accelerate side of the building, which provided a great insight for our students in his perspectives. And he's been to our Achievement Council meetings as well as board meetings. So you'll see them in the future. So the Omaha Student Voices Council will meet monthly and be an advisor to the district. This is, this way we're able to hear what students are feeling related to what we do in the district and the decisions that are made in this room and the decisions that are made in this building, as well as give us an opportunity to put them in front of leaders in the community that can help them develop in their professional areas. Also OPS Equity and Diversity Team is another advocacy and advisory group we work with. Community Diversity Council, which provides insight from the community perspective and Academic Achievement Councils that partner with our district to be able to give us insight into our communities in which we serve. Next up is communication. It's important that we develop comprehensive promotional plan and make sure that we are including in our strategies ways in which we will very intentionally work to communicate within our community about what we're doing for our diverse population and that we are including all of our stakeholders. Comprehensive promotion plan allows us to be able to communicate a variety of different things that we are doing in the district, celebrate those and also get impact on other, or get insight into other areas that we can do better on. We'll conduct formal research with the diverse communities to find out what are the methods in which they prefer to be communicated to, where are they getting their information from and make sure that we are in the places that they are or that we are getting information out to them in a format that they can have accessibility to. Explore non-mainstream media outlets is important so that we, as we're promoting out, we're not just looking at our mainstream, but also other mainstream as well as some that may be off of the general beaten path that are really very important in terms of a particular community and where they get their source of information. We need to make sure that we're there. We want to expand opportunities for non-English speaking families to get involved in our schools. There are, again, people from a variety of countries that are within countries and communities that are in our district and we need to find ways to proactively engage them in terms of the education of our students about their culture, about their history, about their expectations and about their experiences. If, for example, we have students that are Corin, let's say Hartman Elementary is right down the street from my house. I go there and I greet in the mornings some of the kids. They have an African-American population and a Corin population and the two of them are in a building and don't really know each other and that can cause some tensions. But we can provide opportunities for families to come in, talk about their culture, their history, their experiences and really provide a learning opportunity. And so communication is important in that way. And then implementation of a speakers bureau that will be a resource for both the district and the community. So I want to put together those folks that are within these district that know about different areas that could be a benefit for not only the buildings to say, I need some information in this particular area, who do we have available, but also as a community resource. We have access to so many people that other community, other organizations do not have access to. I want to make sure that we have a speakers bureau to address that. And the final two are school support and cultural support. Again, educational equity policies and procedures manual as a school support, turnaround school support, being able to provide information, resources that are available for those schools that are looking at a turnaround model, as well as those who are looking to make some dramatic and drastic changes within their school and would like to make sure that they're culturally responsive. Looking at supplemental book guides. A lot of teachers may say, I love to explore new books, but I'm not trained in how to teach in those particular books. Suppose I grab the autobiography of Malcolm X and I start reading it with my students. What's going to happen? Will the world fall apart? Will everybody riot? My job is to be able to explain how to avoid riots in the school. Also with the supplemental book guides would come curriculum for those who have not been able to develop curriculum in those specific areas. So they're able to truly walk students through a process that's going to build them up, especially when talking about tough issues. Administrative and professional develop, administrative staff need professional development, frontline staff need professional development. Our office will be able to help out in the areas that fit with equity and diversity. Finally, cultural supports. Developing a vision statement for diversity, I think is important for our district to be able to have so we can rally around that specific measure, that specific vision. And so I believe that collaborative effort needs to happen there. Establishing equity and inclusion guidelines and expectations for all administrators so that they have some measure, again, as an opportunity for them to be able to say, as we're making this decision, what are we doing to make sure that we have the proper guidelines and are we fitting within those? Collaboration with internal departments is also a support that we have. And then Children's Defense Fund has a Freedom Schools. This is an area of exploration for us. This is one that addresses a culturally specific needs. It addresses reading as a primary focus and it's often takes place in partnership, or it always takes place in partnership with a community organization, but in areas where you have a high predominance of schools that may not be performing at the level that they may need to, where their students need extra help. Students within these Freedom Schools increase in their reading levels over the summer and they also find that these students are not subject to the summer slide like students who are not involved in a program like this. So it helps out in both of those areas. And then equity, equal employment opportunity compliance. This is a part of the responsibilities of our office to make sure we're compliant in all of the different areas and that we're exceeding the goals there. I want to end by talking about my, start with my office. It also started in August. The Office of Equity and Diversity did not exist before. I started off with the listen and learn approach and went to these, this is about a third of the list of different organizations that I've visited with to get a feel for where they saw the district, where they felt that our office would be able to be an asset to them as a community resource, answer any questions they may have about the new roles and responsibilities that my office would be getting into. And my current work is here. I ran out of space, so I stopped, but, but this is again, not an exhaustive list, but Best Practices Summit, which is coming up here at the end of May, the 28th and 29th is under the responsibility of my office. We put that together each year for cultural development. We work with the Student Assignment Plan, the Teacher Advisory Group, Recruitment and Strategic Planning Committee and co-chairing that as well. Work with Minnesota Humanities Center, the Achievement Councils, also on the Code of Conduct Review, making sure that our Code of Conduct is responsive in the areas and talking about the impact of some of the decisions that are made there. And the Bond Program Management, of course. OPS Representation with the Empowerment Network, diversity in the workplace workshops for the district here. I work with caring and concerned educators, community immersion for new teachers. This is something that is really important because as new teachers come in, we want to make sure that they understand the places in which they'll work. And right now, the particular approach in doing that did not give them a real immersion approach. Minnesota Humanities Center has an immersion, immersion approach that we're implementing in our program. I've double lined this one here to be able to include the Americanism community, so that's actually another bullet, but like I said, I ran out of space, so I just doubled up on that line. Omaha 2050, Fatherhood Advisory Coalition Team, my brother's Keeper Initiative and Omaha Diversity Week are some community initiatives that I'm regularly involved in. I make sure that the school district is represented there. And stat planning facilitation. My role will also include the facilitation of what UPD is doing now. I'll be doing that moving forward in the area of facilitating meetings of both the stat sessions that happen for the district as well as the priority areas and if we decide that we're going to expand or what the level of expansion is for our priority areas with the school buildings. We have a couple of different buildings that we're working with, the middle school and elementary now, but as we expand that out, collaborating those efforts. And that's all I do.
Let's see, questions, Ms. Williams?
Well, first, for the record, there's an 18-page document full of color and pictures, so I just, we were all kind of excited. We're like, ooh, and which is fine. It's nice. Thank you.
The next time that I'm up, I will, I will have the full color type of thing. I'll work with some IT people who can hack into systems and things like that.
Well, I just wanted to thank you for your work. I've heard lots of wonderful things about what your office is doing, so I wanted to publicly thank you. And also, I'm very excited. I didn't do a board report because I waited to talk about the Omaha Student Voices Council and I'm super excited. I know you already know this. I meant something I'd been, been very passionate about. I think I put Mr. Evans out at a conference, kind of put him on blast in the middle of some student speakers like, hey, we need some student input in our district while we're making all these decisions. And so it was amazing and awesome to see those young people, so I want to thank you for that. And I did actually have the chance to follow up with a few of them, just ran into them like the next day and they were all very excited about the work and the leadership opportunities. So this group that you selected is ready to go. I mean, they're excited. And just for public knowledge, some of the questions that these students asked, they asked about, you know, college opportunities, other leadership opportunities, meeting leadership, how do, you know, how do they develop themselves and how do they really bring leadership back to their schools? They're really engaged students, so I'm excited to meet with them and as much as possible. But I just wanted to thank you for that because that was something for me, very personal and those students are very engaged already. So thank you.
You're welcome. They are well-trained and well-prepared as well in terms of finding out when you have a concern about something you want to keep that may be going away or something that needs to go away that's still here, who to properly go to. And in terms of their community role, they recognize that that's you guys as the board. So you will hear from the students as they come with ideas. We basically give them format for this is how you affect positive growth and vocalize your stance. What they vocalize is on them. And so we tell them, we do not, we don't instruct you on what to share or what not to. If there's something that you're happy about, you can get out there and say it. If there's something that you're unhappy about, you can get out there and say it. And our board is such that they will listen to you. So you may, you will see them for, for absolute certain. I told them that I wanted all the light today, so don't, no, I didn't tell them that.
Very good. Mrs. Fay.
Well, thank you. It's a, it's a very attractive presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I have a couple of questions. Really this, so I won't restate what I said for Jerry's presentation, but I would, because there's so many great things happening, coming out of your office, it would be wonderful to have some of that data to measure where we are today, where we were when you started and where we're going to be tomorrow. Just, I think actually Mr. Vargas said it best in the last presentation, but I, that, you know, I know that you all are doing good things and so I would like to be able to point to it and say, this has grown by this much or we've reduced this problem by this much or we've become this much more inclusive or whatever. You're going to measure and set goals and targets for yourself and measure, so.
Absolutely.
That'd be helpful for me and as I'm communicating back to my constituents. So, so that I understand how these two positions work and how they fit into the organizational chart. Do you have leadership staff as well?
I do not.
Okay. So you're a one-man shop, I got that. And then you report to?
Superintendent Evans.
Superintendent, okay. So I just, I'm trying to get a mental picture for the structure. And then I think, thank you. I think this question is really from Mr. Evans because it, it seems, I had the opportunity to meet with you and the woman from Minnesota Humanities, whose name is escaping me, a couple of months ago.
Eleanor Coleman.
Thank you. Which was great and I really appreciated that and it was directly related to some questions that I had about how we are providing some of these same types of things, equity and diversity as well as support opportunities, all of those things for our LGBT students and staff and families. And your office seems very focused on equity and diversity as it relates to race and ethnicity, which is fine, but my question is then, where does that LGBT piece fall?
Well, I think the conversation was enlightening to Sharif and I too. We probably need to include and be more inclusive within this office on some of the LGBT activities. And just to kind of tie in with Minnesota Humanities, the Best Practices Conferences, in many ways Sharif becomes kind of the coordinator for a whole lot of resources, whether that's Minnesota Humanities, which is a grant-funded organization, providing tons of support on cultural competency in many other areas, or the Best Practices Summit, which is also jointly organized by, I believe it's primarily out of Dr. Garnett's office, but with some other departments that also are a part of that. Or whether it's curriculum pieces that involves curriculum like Barry Thomas, for example, who's our social studies coordinator, he'd be coordinating close with you. So actually, we, we see Sharif as the coordinator of all those things, which should be the LGBT then. So which piece in part does he need to twist and turn to integrate to make sure we've got some reflection of those activities too? Yeah, I'll stop there.
No, that's a great answer.
Human resource, the whole human wise curriculum piece too. I think there's even a piece there that he needs to be aware of and be competent and comfortable with too, as we move towards that. So he'd be a part of the team. A lot of what he does is help integrate teams.
All right. Thank you.
I will add to that. In terms of students who, in terms of student discrimination and my response to that, this, it fits with all areas of EEO protection. And so in those areas, our office would be supportive of that. We extend those resources. In the future, there may be more in terms of specific trainings that are available within that. Right now, that exceeds my particular expertise to be able to do a specific training myself. But there are organizations, I don't know if they made the list, but there are organizations that I've met with intentionally. Inclusive Communities being one that I'm very familiar with and I work with quite closely for providing feedback to me on, on resources or how to be support to students within our district. And there are a few other organizations as well, some of who have even helped with some of our wording of our, in, within our district to be able to specifically include within our policies, language related, related to the LGBT community, separate from just general bullying, for example.
Right.
And then one last element is that in some cases of what I measure and do and address as we look at, let's say academic performance or suspension rates or other things of that nature, we don't gather combined with LGBTQ classification. And so therefore, some of the initiatives that I have that are specific towards particular groups are because we do look at that. We look at grade level, we look at gender, male, female, and we look at ethnicity in terms of the data we collect. And so in some of those initiatives, they don't include the LGBT community because we don't have a way of cross data on that.
Right, right. Absolutely. And some of that may be reflective in ways that you can't, when there's a positive change in ways that you can't necessarily directly tie back to one initiative, but to the things that are coming out of both of your offices and district-wide things, school climate surveys, et cetera, when there's a reflection of less, you know, students feeling safer at school or feeling less bullied or whatever, that's a kind of an overall reflection of things happening across multiple areas. So, and of course, the more proactive we can be, then hopefully the less reactive we have to be with complaints, the EEOC kinds of things. And we had at the Human Growth and Development Forum that was here, there were representatives from a number of those groups, PFLAG, GLSEN. So I know that probably Karen Spencer May could put you in touch with some of the folks that were here for that, who are already well-engaged in the district and in touch with student groups throughout. So I appreciate you taking the time to address that. Mr. Evans and Sharif, both of you, thank you.
Were you done? I thought you were done. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lawrow. This is great. I'm, I, I think one of the pieces that I'm very, of the, the district analysis that I'm extremely cognizant of, keeps going in my mind like a recorder, is this need to address our cultural proficiency and inclusiveness in our district. And that's a very big word, right? That's very big and encompasses many different things, but that there were just, in the analysis, there were stories that we had heard from our consultants around where we've gotten it wrong. And obviously we have a lot of work to do, so I'm extremely happy we have a department to this. So my only ask is that we, in seeing everything you do, I want to make sure that you and to make sure that you and your department, and it's you, right, you don't get pulled into so many different pieces of work, where the, where the department becomes the quantity of asks on you, where we would need to make sure we have a perspective from the Office of Diversity and Equity, but that you are saying the quality, these are the four big, five big programs we care about over the course of the year, that I'm going to measure the impact of the work that I care most about that aligns to the work that we have in this plan. Because all that, and the fact that you're doing it, means you're Superman. And, you know, we're all, we all can't be stretched to the point where we don't take into account, can, can an individual or, or, or a team really do all of that to the best of its, of the ability and the goals we want? Or do we really need to double down more on the things that are going to have the biggest impact on some of these measures we talked about? You know, the percent of parents reporting feeling respected and valued. Yes, doing all of these is going to get there, but which of these, or which, you know, which of the programs, or the relationships, or the big summits are going to have the biggest impact on that percentage? And that's, that's, that's just a reflection and a comment, because it's something I've just, you know, I'm starting to be more cognizant of, that's going to be helpful for us. That's going to be helpful for us and helpful to be able to communicate to our constituents. And so we get to a place where it's more about the quality and not the quantity. I'm positive you've reflected on this already, and you have many asks upon you, so this is not assuming that you don't already think about that, or our district thinks about it, but it's making sure we don't get down to that slope. Sorry, that tricky, you know, that, you know, that route. I don't want us to get to that place, where you become the catch-all for everything that has to do with cultural or identity inclusivity. And instead, we are doubling down on the things that really, truly matter to address the inequities that we saw in our analysis of our district.
Ms. Williams?
So I just, after hearing Mr. Vargas, so the thing that I'm saying to you and Mr. Evans is that when you feel you get to that point, I would, I want you to come to Mr. Evans and say, I need help to do all of these things that are important to our district. So that we don't have to worry about you getting over two, with two capes and overloaded. Because the work that you're doing is great, and, you know, I, I know you personally and professionally, and I know you can handle it, but just be mindful of that. And when you need the help, you know, you are, you are a department, but you as a department will eventually have to grow.
Mr. Evans?
Thank you, Madam President. Just kind of in reference to that, and again, a new, a new area, eight months, so Sharif's kind of cutting some new ground here, plowing some new soil for us, and we appreciate that. And as we do that, we started off, and he and I, and I think Dr. Garnett assisted, too, wrote down a 100-day plan, which is a whole lot of the listening and learning, and kind of walked through that so that we could set the stage for where we're at and where we're going. But I do think there's an analysis that needs to be done at the end of this year, and you say, what have I learned? And that's a, that's a meeting that we're going to have not too far down the road, and identify what are the pieces and parts that I prioritize highest, and what are the pieces and parts that I'm going to have to give away to someone else? Or is there someone else that can integrate this particular piece of the work over here? Or can we repurpose an existing position to help support and assist? Because I think there's some repurposing that we can identify with specific projects that help us move down the road. And maybe there's someone else that helps lead and guide one of the specific things that we saw on that list. So we are planning to do that. I think that's critical. I think it's important, especially when you look at something that is new, and you look at something that's transitioning. How do we make that an integrated piece of the whole program and not try to do everything and do nothing? I, I heard the Superman comics. I think that's true. For a whole lot of our staff, we ask so much from them, and they're working so hard, but at some juncture, if you try to do everything, you can end up doing nothing. And so we have to be cognizant of that. We have to be mindful of that. And I think that's something that will be a part of conversations, and it won't just be me, too. Sharif does serve on the Executive Council, so he is in weekly contact with every leader of this district. And he has the ear of every leader in this district, as well as an opportunity to hear from them and what they're working on. And so he has an opportunity really to see the big picture, which was purposeful, purposeful on my part. So he sees the big picture, and then begins to overlay this office and the requirements and responsibilities of the office. So it is, it's a big picture for, for sure. So we understand that. And I appreciate the comments. I think those are really good, good comments on measurables, too. Thanks.
Mr. Wayne?
As we begin to look at budgeting, and this board has heard me talk about the lack of respect that was found in our needs analysis, where 28% of our classrooms had a respect for unique cultures. This board took a position on another elected official because of racial comments. Yet, I won't repeat all the disparities that exist in our schools, but we clearly have that. And it's, this office, when I envision this office being corrected, to look at a laser focus at those issues and address them. And if there's not money behind that priority, then, and staff behind that priority, I will not support any additional budget that we have, or a budget in general, if we don't delegate or dedicate specific dollars for this area. If we don't respect people's cultures, we're never going to learn. And that was clearly observed by our people we hired to go in and do over 200 studies in our classrooms. I look at 5.1 respect for all students and diverse perspectives and values and abilities and beliefs. There's a strategic, strategic plan that is clearly, or at least a strategy we clearly adopted that said this is important. And as we go into June and prioritize, I'm going to ask each board member if this is going to be a priority. Because there's a lot of board members who voted for a resignation of an elected official, but yet we have more impact right now on how we budget and how we make things a priority than that person will ever have on OPS. So we have to put our money behind offices and solutions that will close this lack of respect gap, the opportunity gap. The other slide had a great ending slide of your other presentation with the three kids standing at the ballgame. And it's about equity versus equality. And that slide represents OPS and the future of Omaha in general, that equality is one piece, but if we're not providing equity so everybody can participate in the game, or at least be able to watch the game, according to that slide, then we're not doing our true, true jobs as Omaha Public Schools. So I know we're going to go through some prioritization in June, but I'm telling this board that it'll be a lot of long meetings if we don't make this a priority. That's how serious this is to me. Because our needs analysis said it, this board's taking public positions on it, and it's time for us to step up. Sharif, I appreciate everything you're doing. We've had long conversations in grocery stores and wherever else we end up meeting, because we start talking about stuff. I agree, you're doing Superman's work right now with, with everything you're doing. But I want you to know, this board supports you, and we're going to, we're going to find more ways to support you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stone?
Thank you. I just have one question for Mr. Evans, and you don't have to answer it now, but sometime later in the future. Could you, for the board, give us your vision for this office one year from now? You don't have to give it now if you don't have it, but just list out what do you see this office accomplishing a year from now? Because when we did create the department, I don't think we really have you really explain your full vision, and what you see this office accomplishing short-term and long-term.
That is a pretty lengthy conversation, and it is one that's still developing. And as I mentioned before, we're going to be having some conversations about where we're going and how we're going to get there. Because one thing I don't want to see us do is create a department that does things to schools, instead of doing things with schools. One of the things that the needs analysis also told us is that we had a whole department that the needs analysis said they saw as not connected to the schools, which is why we put all the SSLs in the school settings. And so how do we create inclusive, inclusive nature of all of our groups? In other words, I want this embedded in the whole fabric of our district. I don't want it to be a standalone. That's a big part of my vision. I think that's what a lot of districts end up failing. They create this standalone army, and everybody says, you're doing it to me, instead of with me. How do you create that engagement? How do we use not only Sharif and the office that he has, but also other staff, inclusive of EDs, where we're bringing our principals together, where we're bringing our teacher leaders together, where we're asking their input on how we go, how we go together and march forward together? I really have concerns when we create silos and singular groups that end up saying, this is what you need to do. This will make you better. Let's include them in those conversations. So my bigger part of the vision is be inclusive. I know the board's heard this from me a lot. If we don't include our principals, it's not going to get done. And if we don't develop that relationship with them on why this is important, and include them in that research, include them in that work, and identify how the EDs support that as they're working hand-in-hand with the principals, and as they're working hand-in-hand with our teachers, I don't think we get there. So that's kind of the big, the big picture of my vision is identifying what, what we've learned this year, and what the measurables are. I think the comments from Mr. Vargas and Ms. Fay were very good. I think we have to create measurables. I think we have to create identifiables. And then I think we have to talk about how we are going to integrate that into not just one person, two-person, three-person, but I'm talking the whole district. How are our principals engaged in it? How are the teachers engaged to it? And, and again, I, and maybe I, maybe I don't see everything, but I'm in, I've been in every single one of our schools, most of our schools, multiple, multiple times. I find our staff to be high-quality folks. I find our principals to be high-quality folks. I'm not saying they can't be better, but in general, I see a group of caring principals who want their young people to succeed, and want us to work with them to find ways to help them be more successful. So I think this office has a critical job in helping partner with them on how do we expand, whether it's Minnesota Humanities' role, and how they're providing the Best Practices Summit, and how they're providing ongoing training that they're already providing today. How do we expand that role? And do we have external groups, philanthropic groups, that say, we want to work with you, and we want to continue expanding some of these activities that we've got measurables that show improvement? The schools that are most highly engaged in Minnesota Humanities right now, for example, do we have evidence that they're making an impact? That's part of this office's role, and then to figure out, how do we expand that, and how are we going to get supports to expand that? So I guess I see it as an integrated piece, an inclusive piece, and one that engages actually not just a group here, but everybody, which, that's really where the power, to me, is. When you expand that influence, that's where you get power. When you create buy-in from everyone, that's where you get power. I really want to be very cautious about, we know the answer, we're going to do this to you, and you'll be successful with all young people, regardless of backgrounds and cultures. I think we need to be inclusive, and we need to be very cautious about how we do that. And I think Sharif's going to do a great job of helping lead and guidance on that work. And I'm anxious to give a board report later on what those measurables are, and how we identify some of those next steps down the road, and how we begin to meet with our principals and teachers to develop those next steps.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much for being here and presenting, and also to Mr. Carter as well, for taking the time to do that. We're going to move on to J-2A, School Improvement Grants, so SIG application for Kennedy. And I'm going to just start off by saying, we didn't quite technically do that correctly last time when we tabled the item. We should have postponed the item with a definite date, so that's why I'm bringing it back. Robert's rules would have said tabling it moved it to a different part of the meeting, but we moved it out of the meeting. So I'm bringing it back, since we didn't quite do it right, and I recognize that we all thought we were bringing it back at a later point. So there really isn't any new information, and I will ask if there's a motion to approve that, and if there is none, then we will move on. So is there a motion for the SIG application for Kennedy Elementary? Hearing none, the item fails for lack of a motion, and we will move on to J-2B Legislative Update. So, Mr. Lindsey?
Thank you. The, there's, the Legislative Committee met via phone conference on Friday. We don't have any action items, but did want to just update you on, on what's happened since your last meeting. First, with respect to OSERS, there's been discussions that have continued on what changes there might be to LB448. We expect to see language for a proposed committee amendment that would become the bill. We expect to see that language tomorrow or Wednesday, and we will have that out to the Legislative Committee for review. My guess is you'll have an action item on that proposal at your next board meeting. The learning community, the Education Committee, met today to begin their discussions about what changes should be done to the learning community. No decisions yet. They just started the discussion today, in-depth discussion today. No decisions yet on what will come out. There's some concepts that are out on the table that we got after the meeting late this afternoon, that we sent out to the Legislative Committee. No decisions on those have been made. They're going to be discussing that again, and, and we expect to know more. We believe that's going to be next Monday, that they'll meet and discuss that. And again, we'll keep the Legislative Committee apprised. Two bills that had action since our last board meeting, LB431, which would change the bidding thresholds for construction contracts by school districts, was passed by the Legislature, and it was signed by the governor. So it will take effect 30 days after the end, excuse me, 90 days after the end of this session. LB343, which would provide some additional dollars for dual enrollment programs, Programs of Excellence, Career Academies, plus some distance ed dollars, failed to advance today with 24 votes, came up one vote short. It may or may not be done for the session. There's some procedural things that will, they'll continue to look at. It could appear as an amendment to another education bill. By, by rule, the bill, if it fails to advance, it cannot be reconsidered at general file the first time, so it would drop to the bottom of general file, and it could come back up that way. But as for right now, it's, it will have to have probably some other procedure to get it passed this year. Be happy to, that's the update since your last meeting, and be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Mrs. Fay?
What was the vote on 343?
It was 24 yes, and I don't know how many no.
Okay.
Quite a few not voting. And we haven't, that was just this afternoon as well.
Right.
We haven't had a chance to talk about the, with senators about why, why they took the votes they did.
Okay. And then, the timing-wise, if the language, the recommended, the language with the recommended changes to LB448 is out tomorrow or Wednesday, is it, is there any chance that there, that would need, there would need to be action taken by the board to support or not support that prior to the board meeting two weeks from tonight?
It's, it's possible. We don't, right, that's, that's part of the problem with the, just the way the legislative session sets up, that, that the timing of when the committee, when the Retirement Committee of the Legislature would meet is, is not in sync with when the OPS Board meets. So it is possible that they'll want to get more direction from the board prior to that. And at this point, I just, I don't know what that time-
All right. I think I just want to make the board aware that that's a possibility, because I think it's a significant enough change that it's not just something that should come as a recommendation from the legislative team, but should have a board discussion on. So just, I'm throwing that out there as something to keep in mind, if there's, has to be a special meeting.
Right. So next Thursday, if we had to, we could have a special meeting before the SAP workshop. So let's, would that be soon enough? Let's see, tomorrow's Tuesday.
Would you say next Thursday? Do you mean three days from now?
No.
Or?
A week from Thursday.
That could be, that, that-
That that would work?
Yeah. And again, I, and I can keep in touch with you, Ms. Scotting and Ms. Fay, about, we do expect to see language tomorrow, and I think we'll get a better idea of when the Retirement Committee is hoping to meet on that night. I-
What days do they, they're the, they're the committee that meets at the lunch hour, right, for the limited-
Retirement Committee does not have a set date.
Okay.
And right now, committees can meet at any, when they can fit it in, because they don't have public hearings for all executive sessions.
Okay. Okay. So it could be anytime?
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
And then, did you say that you just sent us the Learning Community information?
Yeah, to the Legislative Committee this afternoon.
Okay.
Late this afternoon.
And you've emailed that to us?
That has been emailed to the Legislative Committee.
And then tomorrow you'll get us the other?
Yes.
And on the bidding thresholds, did that move that from $50,000 to $100,000?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to remember what that was.
I believe it actually moved from, it may have been from $40,000 to $100,000.
Okay. Forty to 100, okay. That's great, when we're in the middle of lots of construction, so I'm sure Dr. Turnquist appreciates that. Does anyone have any other questions for Mr. Lindsey? Okay, if not, we'll stay tuned to hear from you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, the Bond Program Economic Inclusion Plan, not sure, Dr. Turnquist, or?
You want me to start off?
Oh, we have a whole team here to present. Mr. Ray, you're not presenting, you're just helping. That's good. We need you.
Thank you very much. Let me get organized a little bit here. Hello, good evening. We appreciate the opportunity. Oh, there we go. Got a veteran here, so that's wonderful. We appreciate the opportunity to present the Economic Inclusion Plan that we've really been working on over the last four months. So I know there's been talk of new departments and new programs, and this definitely fits into that category for the district. I first want to say, you know, this, this work products a significant team effort from, from the community, the district staff that we've been able to interact with, board members, Superintendent Evans, really the, a large collection of what makes up the OPS School District. Of course, we had been charged by Dr. Turnquist to break the mold, to do things that haven't been done inside of the Omaha area, and, you know, with her focus of, of doing the right thing. So we, we feel like we've put together a plan that, that does the right thing. It utilizes small businesses, it promotes the, the growth of them, it provides opportunity of level playing field contracts. So we're, we're going to go through the plan, and there's some specific sections, and I'll reference some pages and walk through in the actual document itself. But I do want to, I do want to make a note about economic inclusion. We feel like we've started what we believe is sustainable, high-performing plan that'll lead the Omaha market in economic inclusion. World-class economic inclusion is, is difficult and time-consuming to achieve, because in the, in the essence of what we're doing is we're changing behavior. And we're, we're doing that with processes, we're doing that with conversation, we're doing that a lot of different ways, but at the end of the day, what we're asking are the district's business partners, as well as the district, to do is change the way they have behaved in regards to contract in the past. So that takes time to implement. However, we've, we've already seen successes of the implementation that we've done to date. Early on, and I think this was presented in prior meetings, but a lot of our designers, a lot of your designers, you know, identify that they'd never even been asked to participate in economic inclusion, not even had a conversation about it. So we've, we've gone from that, you know, at month zero, to four months later, working with every design firm on an economic inclusion plan that, that consists of the three major components of subconsulting utilization, student engagement, and workforce development. So, that industry in itself has come light years ahead regarding this program. Again, the, much of the focus tonight is, we provided a lot of information at the workshop on the 26th of March, so we're kind of focusing from that point forward. So there's a couple recommendations that I'll touch on, and a few other things. The first recommendation I'd like to draw your attention to is on page two, and I will, page two of the document, and it's, it's titled, "The Economic Inclusion Policy." So one of the things that we've been working on is, is, or a lot of the things that we have been working on, sorry, in regards to economic inclusion, has been done without any district or board policy regarding this topic. But we feel that that is a critical component that is needed inside of the plan. We feel like this policy can be aligned with the Strategic Plan, item 6.2, working closely with business communities to maximize resources. So we feel there's direct correlation with, with what the plan is, is trying to do in economic development with this strategic plan. The, the policy would be developed in partnership with legal, legal counsel, and the Economic Inclusion Leadership Team. That would be a policy presented to the board, and it would become a board policy, not just a process or a procedure inside of a department or the district, but it would become board policy. The second item, we, we talked about this in, in the workshop on the 26th, and it's about setting a goal, and identifying a target to drive the contractors, designers, everyone that's participating inside of the Bond Program towards a focused target. Currently, what we're recommending is establishing a combined 7% goal that would be applied to the design and construction components of the Bond Program. This would be identified as the baseline. From, from this, utilization of this goal would provide approximately $17.5 million worth of opportunities for small businesses. We do recognize that there are other opportunities, or potential opportunities, out there inside of other budgeted line items inside the Bond Program. As those budgeted line items are identified during the design process, for example, if we were working on a project and we needed to take program contingency and move that into a project to spend on construction, we would likely want to apply the 7% target to those funds that were moved. At the same time, if, in, in land acquisitions, kind of on the other side of it, that process has started, and we've identified, there's a $27.2 million line item for land acquisition. If contingency was moved to that to support additional costs there, there's not a lot of capacity or none in the land acquisition component, so applying a 7% goal there would not produce a lot of value. So, we've, we've kind of, in a lot of the presentations and conversations, the, the goal is a project-by-project, kind of case-by-case analysis, where there's real opportunity matched up with real capacity. Got to have those two things to be successful. Moving, pardon me, moving on to the bottom of page three, the implementation strategies, and we've talked at great length at the, the workshop about these, but I wanted to highlight really two of them that are significant. One is the approval from the district to allow contractors to bill twice a month. And I think that that goes and happens without really identifying the significance of that. The, the significance of paying twice a month really allows our contractors that struggle with line of credit, the ability to shrink the line of credit they need, because they're going to have cash flow and, for quicker. And I, all, every contractor that we have talked to has identified with this as a significant win, so we appreciate the board allowing that process to happen. Can't underscore that enough. The other component that we've really been working hard on is modifying the general contractor's contract. And we've been working with Barrett Home from a legal perspective to include language within the statutes that we have to work in, within those parameters, to identify the goal, to drive our contractors to reach that goal, and if they don't reach that goal, they need to provide good faith effort documentation. So that's another component that we've really been working on over the last several weeks. Just want to move into the outreach and highlight a couple of things. We're really working on two. Day-to-day outreach is on a continuous basis, but we're, we're really focusing on two events. One is in the South Omaha area. We're working with several-